Today's meeting of the Air Shirley Regional School Committee meeting Wednesday, May 1st.
Recording in progress.
Those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by APAC and ASRSD. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the chairperson who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Mass Wire Tap statute. The listing of matters that are, the listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Per policy, BEDH, public comments, not discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens in the school committee. It's a citizen's opportunity to express an opinion on issues of school committee business. Citizens will have three minutes to express their views. Any staff members addressing the school committee are reminded of their obligation to state federal student record laws with respect to maintaining the confidentiality of student record information and refraining from disclosing any personally identifying information regarding students. With that, we'll call the meeting order and do the pledge. Attendance and all that will come. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready for the roll?
Mr. Resnahan, Mrs. Canara.
Here.
Mr. Quincy.
Here.
Mrs. Rishu.
Here.
Mr. Rupert.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
All right, and I think we've got a student showcase tonight, so let's see what we've got. Mr. Christie.
You ready?
Mr. Deppi.
Mr. Deppi. Thank you for having us here tonight. Mr. Deppi and I are proud to talk about one of our collaborations this year, and what we've decided to do is have high school students intern at Page Hilltop. So for the second semester, just the second semester this year, we have thirty-seven high school students at Page Hilltop. They're all eleventh and twelfth grade students. They come all seven periods, various kids coming different periods, but all seven periods of the day we have high school students at Page. They're providing models and mentors for the Page Hilltop students. Our hope here is that this is going to create for us future educators. We at the high school have some truly phenomenal students that we're happy to get to showcase for you tonight. For us, this provides parent professional support for Page Hilltop, and for the high school students, it provides real-world experience. It's the ultimate in win-wins. We will be continuing this relationship again next year. So we have some of our phenomenal high school students and Page Hilltop students that are here and can talk a little bit about what their experience has been this year. No, I know you are dying to talk. So please, come on up.
It's your thing to do. Hi, I'm Mel, and I've been doing this since September or October, and I've had a blast. It's honestly my favorite part of the school day. I go and I first I focused on one kid in specific, but as I went to his class every day, and I go for two hours like every day, it's insane, but as I started going, I developed a relationship and a bond with everybody there. And it's honestly one of the most rewarding things I can say I've done. You learn a lot about people and like how school is different for everybody. The student I was focused with, he's really, he struggles to learn and people might assume like that he's not smart or anything, but like as you get to work with him, you realize that he's actually really smart. He knows everything he does. He just struggles to concentrate and sometimes that's, it's cool to be able to help someone like that because, I mean, everyone struggles to concentrate. Like I, I'm not good at math, you know, I can admit that. So it's cool, it's cool to be able to help him and like, once he gets comfortable, it's cool to be able to see like, wow, he really knows everything. And yeah, I don't know. I really enjoy everything I've done there, and so I think it's a great program and I think it should continue on forever.
Haley, I think you should bring your two up and you can all talk to me. Your two.
Your friends.
Thinking about, Haley's a second grader, and introduce yourself and then tell them who your two friends are. Yeah, stand over here so they can see you.
She needs a chair.
Hi, I'm Haley, and this is Abby and David, and they are very great in my class. We, I loved when I went to lunch with them and I saw all the high schoolers there. It was really fun. Abby gave me a tour and it was really fun.
Good job.
Internship has been an amazing opportunity I've been so grateful to have. It's taught me so much things, like it taught me how to be more of like an adult, definitely when I came over there, especially because I'm not trying to pursue a career in education. I kind of didn't really see it as much, just hanging out with kids, but definitely it's taught me to have more control in there. Like I had to go in there and bring my own place because nobody really tells you what to do. And that was definitely a shock for me and something I really needed, especially going to college next year. And it's something that I really enjoy. It's taught me how to teach, which kind of sounds a little silly, but I guess when you're like explaining something to peers, it's way different than explaining to someone who doesn't know like nearly as much and hasn't been in school for nearly as long. That's been like kind of a shock to me, something I really struggled with. And also just being around adults has been very strange, like working with the teachers who were in our classroom. Instead of them telling us what to do, they see us like on the same level, and that has been something very helpful to me, especially with the only job I've ever had was with one other teacher, teenager. So I'm really glad that I've been able to feel more like an adult going into my adult life, so.
Yeah, I also help a kid and he is kind of in the same spot as Mel, and it's like my favorite part of the day because I have a younger brother and I love to be the role model for him, but helping the whole class, I can be a role model really early. And I try to be the role model, but like I wish I had if I was like.
Thanks, guys.
So I'm Marissa, and I've been doing internship since the beginning of the year as well like Mel has, and I've found it very beneficial in all sorts of ways, even though I'm not planning on pursuing a teaching career. I'm planning on going into nursing and I feel like you work with people of all ages, so I feel like being exposed to children and like how their minds kind of work and learning how to like deal with them has been very beneficial for me. And honestly, like just as much as it's seen as helping the school and the kids, I feel like it's so beneficial for me as well. Like it makes me like happy just to like go and see the kids and work with them and brings a smile to my face at each time.
I just add to what Mr. Christie said. I mean, we've, we've collaborated a lot of stuff, sports things, helping with daycare, PTO, music, I mean, we've had a great connection here, but this has been one of the best. When he brought it to me, I said, it sounds good to me, and we put it together and it just grown and grown. And I just see this both sides. I mean, I've got to know, it's nice to see a lot of these kids I knew because they came to Page Hilltop. It's nice to see them in a different role, and they've just, you know, done wonders in with our kids and it just, because I know some of the kids you're talking about, they really warmed it and turned around some of our kids, and the kids love to see them. And on your, funny desk, we took some pictures yesterday, Mel and another girl, they put together, our kids came over for a lunch with all of them. That's a group we had lunch in, and they got to take a tour of the high school and see all the cool stuff over here and everything. So it was, that was a nice thing to do. So it's just a fantastic program, and like you said, I'm looking forward to next year and expanding and growing.
Steffi, I know our friend doesn't want to come up, could you, but could you introduce her to us? Well, she could stay there. You just introduce, you can introduce her from there.
This is Amani Oranga Yunis. She's in kindergarten.
Well, thank you for participating in the mentorship program. I'm glad you're here.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
So are you focusing on kindergarten, first grade? What is your focus for the mentoring program?
Students are, are in all grades throughout the building. Some of our students are more focused on building specific connections with some of the Page Hilltop students that perhaps could use a big brother, big sister type of relationship. Other students of ours have a specific academic area of interest, be it physical education to a specific grade. So we've tried to line them up with areas of their interest. And as students have been there for a set period of time, we've tried to change around their, their day a little bit so that they can experience various aspects of elementary school life.
Yeah, some of them, like say, we started out putting in place where teachers could need help, and then they, high schoolers kind of told us things they'd like to do. So it does go K1, but mostly K1, 2, we get the most of them, but we also have some 3, 4, 5.
So is it mostly seniors?
Seniors and juniors. Yeah, so we, we started this fall with just seniors, and frankly, it was going so well, and we had such a tremendous outpouring from our student population that we decided to expand to our juniors as well. This is something we see continuing next year. Again, I think for our upperclassmen, it, it makes a big difference in their life. We want it to be something that they strive for, and I believe we have the parent of a current junior in the room right now who is very excited to continue this, his senior year. So again, whether students are looking to become teachers in the future, or whether they're looking for, as Mel talked about, kind of the adulting experience, it's that great transition, the bridge between being a second semester high school senior or first semester high school senior and getting to, to lead your postgraduate life.
How many students are involved at, say, the high school?
From the high school, right now it's thirty-seven.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So a significant portion of our, our upperclass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like you say, our kids absolutely love it, and it, the difficult part has been because the high school has a rotating schedule, so it's not the same time. But they're getting used to the worry, but there's been times when some of the kids will be hounding the ladies in the office like, when's so-and-so coming? Is he coming back? Can you call over? He's coming over?
That sounds really good.
Thank you.
Just a couple of examples. One of, you know, the pictures here, and you have to keep in mind that most of the school committee members come right from work, and this food makes me hungry, so it's hard for me to concentrate.
Chicken paddings.
Classroom stuff would be appreciated for them.
What did you have, what did you have to eat? Amani, what did you have along with the chicken? What did you get for dessert?
Like a cookie?
Those are special cookies. Not every student here at the high school got those. You guys got those special cookies.
And I think the, the experience that you can, I, I'm going down this weekend. My son's graduating. He's in a music education major at Auburn University, so he's out looking for jobs now. But as a side benefit in you looking at teaching career, there's a lot of places looking for teachers. So you're going to find a place that will be vying for your talents, and this amount of experience is going to help. Also, the other benefit is that while you're, all through your, your college careers, you come home for these odd breaks sometimes. You get on lists for different schools. Your phone will go off at all hours. We are always looking to backfill, so you have automatic work. You don't have to schedule anything. You just schedule then, you just respond, so that.
Can employ you every day.
And you get experience in a natural school environment, and you get to learn, I mean, you've learned a lot already, but the more time you spend in the school environment, the, the far better off you're, you're going to be, so.
My easiest time at finding subs is those six weeks around the holidays.
Right.
And then a couple of weeks in May, when they'll all be coming back from college again, that's the best time.
Yeah, it is.
A few questions. In terms of the way you've set it up, is it a high school mentor to an elementary student one-to-one, or is it more general to the class? Is it?
It's a combination. For some, it's a one-on-one.
Yep.
Like Mel for one, it started out, and that's because going out to talking to teachers and knowing my students and stuff, with kids that like say needed that big brother, big sister.
Yep.
Somebody could work in the, not only on the academics part, but work on the whole social, emotional, and help them out. With others, it's more of a classroom setting, and they will go in and, you know, work with the groups of kids within the teachers, you know, throughout the course of the day. And then with some, it's, you know, it's floating around. Like we have some that go specifically to work in, you know, phys ed with Mr. O'Brien and stuff, so they'll see different classes all day long, so.
Great. And I mean, just kudos. I think any of these programs where we have students from different schools connecting, right, you high school to middle school to elementary, like that builds a community in our district. It keeps kids in our district. It keeps kids engaged in the district. So the more we can do this, the better. For students who are in it, whether you want to be a teacher, or a nurse, or a banker, like no matter what you want to do, there are very few, nursing might be the one exception. There's very few jobs that make you think as hard as being an educator. The transferable skills you have being in a school and being responsible, even approximately responsible for the well-being of young people, it's enormously challenging. And so if we're not doing it, or if you need someone to help, you can write the most compelling resume or college application from this experience. So ask Mr. Christie, ask Mr. Deppi, like ask ChatGPT, like the critical thinking, the time management, the project management, the interpersonal executive functioning, all of this is there. And so make sure that you are coming out of this with more than a bullet point that said like, I helped kids, because you are getting a lot out of this. And so make sure you take a moment before you leave for the summer to get on paper, like what are the four bullet points I want to put in my resume, because it will be, it'll be worth a lot.
And every one of them has spent time in lunch and recess too. They know how to.
Oh, my goodness. If you, yeah.
I'd just like to publicly say, say thank you to Mr. Deppi for, for allowing the high school kids to go there. For, for the high school students that have been showing up there all year, you've represented us so well. I'm so proud of you guys. This really is putting our best face out in the community, and having you all represent us and who we are makes me proud every day you, you walk across the street. So thank you.
Haley and Amani, a few years you're going to be at high school, and you can come to this too, I think.
Yes, yes.
We have mentors in the middle school too. You can do it in the middle school.
Thank you for supporting this program.
Encouraging us.
It was an easy decision, easy win.
I just want to say thank you. I have two boys at Page Hilltop, and they love when you guys come over. It's like, I hear about, I hear everyone's names, which I'm forgetting now, but I hear about, you know, the high school students that come visit them. So thank you guys. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, students and families. Thank you for bringing them out tonight. It's always great. It's our, easily our favorite part, favorite part of the meeting, maybe only second to our student representatives. So with that, I'm going to make a hard hit to our student representative, Ms. Devon Del Yanni.
Well, I will say I was also a Page Hilltop student.
Page Hilltop's really representing tonight.
Okay, so Leah cannot be with us tonight. She had to get home. So it's just me, but I'm just going to talk about what I've been up to. It's been a while since I've been here. So, yeah. So first things first is, school is also over, which is crazy. And I started flag football, and I love it. It's so fun. Abby does it too. And I don't know, I love the environment. It's so fun. It's such a like chill sport, because you know, I'm doing softball too, so it's a lot going on, but it's really fun. And we're hoping to make it to Gillette, but you got to be top four, so we got to start picking. We got to start doing better. For softball, you know, lots of games, lots of stuff going on. We just had a raffle to raise money, and we raised over $4,000, which was great. And we're hoping to get some gear and some new equipment, especially leave some stuff for the people next year. And we're hoping to also make it to the, you know, the state finals, but also need to start doing better. So for senior activities, I'm on student council, and we've been working on a lot of things. We're going to do paintballing, which should be fun, except it's two days before prom, so we're hoping not to get bruised up.
Can we do that?
What are we doing? Which should be fun. We're going to try to have a movie night here at the school with popcorn and candy, and we're going to pull the poll to see what movies to watch. Prom is obviously coming up. We're almost all set preparing for it, but we just got to get people to buy tickets now. We're looking forward to the car parade, you know, decorating the cars going through town. And I think I'm most excited for the Through the Years Parade, where you walk through the elementary schools and middle school and high school. I like, would love to see all the kids and like all my old teachers, and I'm, I'm just looking forward to that. I think it'll be really fun. I'm obviously still trying to get through school, which is hard, and we have all of our AP exams coming up. I'm doing statistics and AP physics C mechanics. I'm hoping to pass physics and do, get a two in, in physics. Wait, pass stats, get a two in physics. That's a goal. We'll see. I'll update you how that goes. And then lastly, I'm still figuring out the whole college situation. If you asked me yesterday, I would have said I'm going to UC Boulder, but that actually changed, and I'm, she's still trying to figure it out. But I think I'm going to Villanova, so we'll see. Yeah, so.
Closer.
That's all. That's all I've been up to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Today is actually Devon's last meeting as our school committee representative. I'll, I'll tell you, from working with her throughout the year, I knew her before this year, but really getting to know her this year has been absolutely incredible. She is a wonderful young woman with an incredibly bright future ahead of her. She's made my year better. So personal advice that she's given me, I'm going to be a better principal. I've taken to heart, and you will truly be missed. Thank you, Devon.
Before we let Devon go, any questions or comments from committee members?
Thank you for taking the time to come out. It's been a really great hearing, what's going on in high school, and good luck with college, and hopefully we'll maybe get an update even if they come back.
For sure.
What was the deciding, what was your, your criteria going between Villanova and Boulder?
Okay, well, I was thinking Villanova. That's where I kind of decided on, but it's really expensive. So I was like Colorado is a cheaper alternative where I can get the same like level of intensity for what I want to do. It's really good in astronomy and space stuff, and it would be really fun. And then I found out my financial aid was wrong at Colorado, so it's actually more expensive than Villanova. So now I'm leaning more towards Villanova. But I really like it there. It's really pretty. It has great like facilities, and I love how it's like right outside of Philly and, you know, not too far from home. So I think I'll end up there. I just have to find a way to pay for it.
If you're still open, Catherine got a ten-year, a, a ten-week internship at National Renewable Energy Laboratories in Boulder, Colorado.
Really?
If you want to drive out with her in ten days, you can go check it out. It's a free ride. It will fly you home. You'll have a great trip.
It is really pretty. I love Colorado. I love it. But I don't think, I don't think it's going to work, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's all right. I'll take your place.
You can go on the trip, yeah.
Thanks.
Villanova's very well respected, you know.
Yeah, I know.
It'll be great.
All right. Well, just echoing the, the committee and Principal Christie, thank you for giving up your Tuesday and Wednesday evenings this year. It is, again, second to maybe only the student showcase, our favorite part of the meeting. And I mean, I know college decisions are difficult at the end of the day. Wherever you choose to go, what you put into it is what you're going to get out of it. So no matter what you choose, it'll be the right decision. And so it'll be difficult. It'll feel daunting, but like you'll be fine. And just as a point of feedback, when you come up and present, don't say it's just you. We get you. Let's celebrate that. We know your counterpart couldn't be here, but fortunately we have you to present, so don't sell yourself short. But thank you. It's been great. Joyce?
I'm not going to be so serious. I just have kids in high school here. We want to hear about the prom. When is it? Where is it? You know, the important stuff here.
Okay, okay. So it's on May 30th from six o'clock to 10 o'clock at the Sheridan in Nashua. It's a royal masquerade theme.
Oh, fine.
I don't know. I made the playlist, so it should be pretty good. It should be pretty good. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Good, good. You have to end on a light note, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, I just see my plaque. Yes. Thanks for the plaque.
All right. Thank you for all of our students who came and showed up for tonight. Michelle, any public comment on the Zoom?
No.
All right. Any public comment in the room? I'm going to assume no. So with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've got the regular session minutes, a trip to Canterbury Lake Park, and some warrants to approve. Any questions or discussion on any of the items listed?
Mr. Chairman, should we expound a little bit on the Canterbury Lake Park, like who it is and stuff like that? Because we have to sign it separately, don't we?
We probably do. Let me find it in a packet.
That was just an approved thing.
Yep, so it is an approval for the seventh grade out-of-state day trip for, oh, I was very confused because it said April 1st, but that is the date of the request. The field trip will be the 13th with a rain date of the 14th. There'll be approximately 131 seventh graders, and the cost is $70 per student.
This has been a yearly trip. They've gone on for quite a while.
Don't you think you had to put special attention on it?
Any other questions or comments about items in the consent agenda? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve the April 9th regular session minutes, the annual grade seven field trip to Canterbury Lake Park, and then the AP and payroll warrants as listed.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right. Do we need, we don't need to do a roll call, do we? Just?
No.
All right. Vote on it. What's the, what are the words I need to say first of all?
All in favor.
All in favor. There we go. I'll get it.
Aye.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Great. With that, we'll move on to new business. Proposed increase to in athletic user fees. Mr. Steven Kendall, third favorite participant.
I used to be the favorite.
If Joyce was in my seat, Joyce might say.
And I'm going to take your advice. You get me tonight. Dr. Renner gets a night off from me in the sports report, which I'm like.
Exactly.
We don't want to put him down.
I'll start with, I'll start with the good news of the, what's going on?
You keep saying everything else is their favorite part of the meeting, which is, I'm just getting bumped. That's okay. I get it. They're hard. I'm going to keep it to the end.
I'm over there doing announcements every day, so I, I see these guys coming in and out, and my first grader loves seeing the interns come in. He loves them at recess. Mel and Marissa, James Gauntlet. And I've seen the work that they do firsthand, because I'm, I'm in that building a lot. And it's a great program. Those kids are doing a wonderful job. And I've seen the difference in the students that they work with as well, because I've seen them from summer school last year through all this year. Some of them are in my son's class, so I, I get to see the impact that they've made. So I've told them a lot that they've done a great job, and I think it's a great program that Fred and Spencer have started, so I'm glad that's happening. One, the sports report. So it's been a great spring so far. Things are going really well despite the, the weather being inconsistent. The fields are looking great. Kenny Lewis has done a really fantastic job, and Brian Phil Brown as well is out there a lot, keeping the fields up. Today, we couldn't quite get the baseball field dry enough to play, but considering all the rain we had for that to be the first game that we've had to cancel because of, of weather on a day it wasn't raining, it was pretty remarkable. So I want to give Kenny and Brian a real credit for that, because they really work really hard out there getting that field ready each and every day. Last two days have not been easy with, with all the rain on and off. Our volleyball team, our boys volleyball are in our second year of competition, first year in the Mid-Watch Uso League. So that's a big jump. Last year, we played a lot of independent schools, independent schedules, played a lot of smaller schools. This year, we've had to make the jump to Mid-Watch, where we're playing Algonquin, Wachusett, and the Shoba Regional, and Marlboro. We're doing very well. We're four and seven currently, but they've shown a lot. Uh, we're, we're four and seven currently, but they've shown a lot of improvement. There's a lot of matches that they could've, could've gone either way. They've been very competitive and close. Our coach, Brian Leighton, uh, has done a really nice job. Brian's a teacher at Black Sun Valley Tech, who I had known from when I coached hockey at, at Shoba. He's also a school committee member in Lunenburg. Um, he has, he has a fun meeting tonight, much, much less fun than this one will be, I think. Um, but he's done a great job and they've shown really rapid improvement in a very short amount of time and we're very pleased with what we're seeing from them. It's a positive group of young men and a lot of whom don't play any other sport. So adding the sport last year gave opportunities to kids who normally would not have played a sport, so that's been great to see. Uh, our track teams, seems like this is a broken record, but it's a good broken record. They're undefeated. Uh, they won, they came in second, both boys and girls in the Central Mass Division Two relays last weekend at, at Gardner. Uh, they did a great job. I was lucky enough to get up there and it was probably, and we'll see the same thing here in a few weeks, but probably about 3,000 people at the event. Uh, and to see our kids do really well. Pole vault has really helped us. We got six points in, in both boys and girls pole vault, which is something we had not done previously, but to be able to add it to our program with the, with the new track complex has been really good, really help. It really was the difference between second and third for the boys, uh, so that was nice to see. Uh, both track teams host Narragansett Regional and Collegiate Charter of Lowell tomorrow. That will start about four o'clock and probably end with 200-plus athletes will probably end about nine o'clock. It's gonna be a long meet tomorrow. Um, and coming up also, we have the Central Mass Division Two meet, which we hosted last year for the first time. We host this year again on May 11th. Uh, it's a busy day, but it's a great day if you can get up here. Uh, we had perfect weather for it last year and pretty much every parking spot, this parking, two parking lots, plus the entire lower field was filled with, with cars as people were up there to watch. And we had nothing but positive comments on, on our facility, which is why we were asked to host it again. So we're thrilled to be doing that. Uh, our middle school track program, which started this year, another program we're able to start this year, has been a massive success. We have 45 kids, which is far more than we anticipated getting. Uh, and it goes back to what, what Chris had said earlier about getting kids from different schools involved. And we got far more students being able to involve, a lot of sixth graders who normally wouldn't be able, able to participate in a spring sport, they're now participating. Um, Trey Skipper, one of the parent professionals down at the middle school has been, been the coach and working with our high school coaches, they have a nice program going. Our high school coaches have always used to having the middle school kids there. There's just a few more of them this year than we, we used to. So they, they have a whole meet Friday, which will also probably be pretty long because that's a tri-meet with Lunenburg and Tohoto. I anticipate about 150 athletes out there between those three schools. Um, Chris Donovan, our boys coach, I don't know if he mentioned this last month, but he was named the Division Five Indoor Track Coach of the Year by the MSTCA. Uh, so it's quite a common, second time in seven years that Coach Donovan has been honored. So obviously does a really good job as our entire coaching staff does. And one more, just cause I saw him run this race, cause he beat me. Uh, seventh grader, James Devens, who's on our track team, he came and, he won his age group in the Portland 10-mile race on Sunday. He passed me about mile eight. I said, hey, I kinda, I think I know that kid, has a tip behind me. Then I saw his dad go by. So congratulations, that's a pretty impressive performance at 12 years old to even complete a 10-mile race, never mind to flee in about an hour and 20 minutes. So a good job by James. Uh, our baseball team is currently eight and two. They're ranked number five in the state power ratings in Division Five. Uh, we've got a great group of seniors led by Tyler Crawford, James Gauntlet, Bradley Marion, and James Churchill. James Churchill's among the league leaders in batting. Tyler's the league leader in pitching. Uh, they did lose today, five to two to Bron, uh, to Tohoto in a great, a great game. Uh, they host Bronfield this Friday and they'll host Mystic Valley Charter School on Monday. Also wanted to give a, a credit to Russell Kilkeny, who's a member of our football team. He's a Bronfield student, but because we co-op with Bronfield, he plays for us. Uh, and he has started a backpack company, uh, for baseball and softball backpacks. And, uh, his company has, um, made a donation, which we'll be able to approve next time, cause they're just coming in. Wrango Sports, they, he made a donation to our baseball team, which are all his teammates from football basically, but he made a donation to our, our baseball team of backpacks. Uh, you know, it's a smart business move by him, cause now all the other teams will see them. I want to give credit to him as one of our, our athletes, but also as a, a student who's worked really hard at starting his own company. It's probably guys, he's hoping it's always gonna pay his way through college. So thank you to Russell and his dad and, and his company. Uh, our softball team, as, as Devon mentioned, is having a pretty good season. Devon's one of our standouts, she plays multiple positions. Uh, Gabby Sweeney, another senior, they've been really, really doing a great job as senior leaders, the only two seniors we have on the team. Uh, they're four and four right now and ranked 22nd in Division Four. Um, they had a tough loss with Tohoto today as well. They host St. Bern's on Friday, Tohoto on Saturday afternoon, and then Mystic Valley on Monday. They got a busy, busy week ahead and, uh, but they're doing great. Our JV team's been a very competitive day, had a great game today with Tohoto out here. Uh, beat Parker School yesterday, so they're doing, doing well as well. Our girls golf team won their first match of the year yesterday, which is quite an accomplishment, cause they beat Westboro, who's the top team in the league. Uh, I don't think any of them are sure how that happened, but it happened, so it's great. Uh, Taylor New, Junior, Junior Grace Cormier, and Senior Sophia Watkins have really stepped up. Uh, and as well as we have our co-op with Groton, so we have one girl from Groton Dunsborough and Emily Hoygen from Groton Dunsborough's been excellent for us as well. Uh, it's co-coached by Peter Gubalini, a history teacher, and Casey Sefton, also a history teacher here. Uh, our girls lacrosse program, we have one girl playing for the, the Groton Dunsborough co-op, and that's Carly Iwa. Uh, she's the second leading scorer of the team and they're ranked five, uh, ranked 11th with a five and two record. Uh, we're hopefully hosting one of their games coming up soon, um, for girls lacrosse here, so Carly getting an opportunity to play on our home field. So we're working on that, the Groton, uh, program. Uh, our boys lacrosse programs with Lunenburg, we have six students playing for that. They've been playing very well. We did host a game for them, so our, our kids got to play a home game, uh, last week. It was kind of a last minute thing, cause they're, they had to move a track meet and they called me, said, can we use the field? I said, yeah, come on up. Were able to get them out there, get our kids a home game, playing in front of a lot of fans. We did have a lot of kids show up, which was great. Uh, as Devon mentioned, flag football started up and it's still a club sport, uh, but we've been doing a lot to support that. Uh, between myself and Dave Palazzi from Lemonster, we're working on, uh, creating another proposal for MIA to hopefully have that as a, an MIA sport. Uh, not next year, but the following year, we'll be up for vote next year. Uh, but Devon's one of them doing a great job. Leah Figaro's been outstanding at quarterback. And then Bella Blank, Devon, Gabby Sweeney, Sophia Watkins, Carly Iwa playing well. Uh, because it's a club sport, they can, they can play two sports, which is technically it's MIA rules, but since it's a club, they can participate. Um, so it's been good for them. They play tomorrow night, excuse me, Friday night at Doyle Field in Lemonster. Uh, we hosted the opening week back, uh, April 15th and will be hosting again on May 13th. Uh, we had 11 schools here on the, in April, uh, nine here on, uh, May 13th, it's a Monday night. Uh, our unified track program had their first home meet today. We hosted Marlboro really well. Um, we had a lot of, a lot of good participation. We have 16 athletes participating this year. Uh, really big thank you to, to Chad Lindstruth and Keisha, Ms. Keisha Lanunez for their work with, uh, coaching team. We had a bunch of track athletes who helped out with scoring and, and participating. I wanna make sure they get credit for that. Tommy Bergen, Will Marshall, Adrian Murphy, uh, Obi Conwandy were, were really helpful in, in getting that program going and, and helping with the meet today. Our athletic trainer, Nate Diffin, who used to coach our, our unified team, he was out there helping. And Kevin Southwick, math teacher here, who pretty much helps with everything. Like, I say, Kevin, can you help with something? He's there, so he was, I didn't have to ask him, cause he was already out there helping out at shop. Um, they host the Shoba Regional next Wednesday and we will be the host of the Midland-Watchusett League meet on May 22nd. And our track team's hosting the Midland-Watchusett meet on May 14th as well. So that's a Tuesday. Um, we had the Unified Middle School Basketball, uh, that ran in March. Uh, that was a huge success, 16 athletes, again coached by Jackie Kutcher, a Spanish teacher at the middle school. Andrew Skipper, another person who pretty much, if you ask him to do something, he will do it. Devon Williams and Natalie Carroll. Um, we also have the programs going on at Laura White and Paige Hilltop, the Unified Programs are just wrapping up. Uh, Jackie Klein and Meg Chase do a great job at the, at the Laura White One. I don't know if you've seen it, but there's probably around 60 kids there every week playing basketball, so they've, they've done a fantastic job getting that program going. Uh, Justin, Justin O'Brien runs the program over at Paige Hilltop with some help from Toby Wells. Uh, they started that this year, they did a three-to-five program, wrapped it about three weeks ago. They just started the K-to-two program and they've had really good participation there, so it's great to see that happening at the elementary school. Uh, we have, um, Representative from Special Olympics Massachusetts going to come in to work with them about things they can do. Uh, I know we were Unified Champion School for, for the banner school for the high school, but now we'll be able to apply to be a national banner district, uh, starting hopefully next year. So we'll be working on that as well. A couple of things is going on in the PE department as well, since I'm, I'm working with them as well. Uh, Laura White hosted the Bruins alumni last week for their BFIT program, which was a massive success. The kids loved it, a lot of good, uh, advice about leadership and character. Kids really enjoyed it. Now, thank you to Beth Lewis and Ryan Donner and Devon Watlett, the PE teachers, really helping get that program there. Um, we have a couple of leadership things going on. Uh, Carly, our aforementioned Carly, Malia and Bella participated in our Midland-Watchusett League Student Ambassador Program today. Uh, that was at Ultimate Obstacles in West Boylston. Uh, Devon did it last year, actually. Uh, so 20 other schools participate and they, they could've taught leadership skills and overcoming adversity through different challenges, some physical, some mental challenges. Uh, so they get to participate with about 65 other schools. So that was, 65 other students from schools across the Midland-Watchusett League, so that was great. Uh, Marissa Grace, who was here earlier, and Tess Eric Kelly will be our representatives at the MIA Girls and Women in Sports Day on May 22nd at Gillette Stadium. Uh, should be a nice venue change. Uh, your daughter went a couple of years ago, was at Fanuel Hall in Boston, which was a mess to get in and out of at nine o'clock in the morning. So hopefully, uh, it'll be a little bit easier to get in and out Gillette, so they'll be, they'll be our representatives there. Uh, I wanted to just recognize our esports program at the middle school, which has been doing great, something we're looking to add at the high school next year. So hopefully we'll do that. Amy Doll's done fantastic. Uh, kudos to Fred on the Wizards game this week on Monday, I was here for that. The first time I've experienced it as a parent and a player. Uh, it was, it was awesome to see all the, the participation of the kids and I was impressed how many high school kids that started when they're in first grade are still attending it. So it's great to see that. We have a couple of students with a civics proj, project going on here to help raise money, to help buy some clip, helmet clips that reduce concussions. So Lizzie Haas and Jacob Andre are doing that. Uh, I told them whatever they raise, I'll put towards the purchase of them, so they're working on that now. So there's a lot going on with the PE department and with other things as well. And then just one more thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, because he's retiring and he's been a great partner for us, uh, through the years, Jeff Thomas, the Air Recreation Director, uh, who's re, supposed to have retired already, but still hasn't been able to retire. He's been a, a dream to work with. We need anything, he's up here helping us, uh, you know, helping us run the summer camps. Uh, just a, a great guy. I think he's impacted probably anybody who plays sports in, in this two towns, cause he'll go help out FAFS and help out Shirley, he goes help out Shirley too. So, uh, I just wanted to publicly thank him for all the work he's done. We've honored him at a couple of events, but I think it's important to remember, uh, the guy who puts all that time into the community. I know there's a lot of others, but, uh, with him retiring, I think it's a nice time to remember him, so. Uh, and one more thing, we have a telegram, a nice article on three sport coaches, and we have several of those in our district. And God bless them, because I did it for two years and I don't know how anybody coaches three straight seasons. Um, Chris Donovan, Mike Segwin are cross-country and track coaches. And then Devon Williams, uh, who coaches, assistant coach for football, does boys basketball at the middle school and boys baseball at the middle school, and also helps with middle school, uh, unified basketball. And then Trey Skipper, another parent at the middle school, uh, who coached our middle school track, uh, cross-country team this year, coached our middle school track team, uh, does middle school basketball with Devon, and also helped out with the middle school Unified, uh, basketball program. So, uh, we also have 11 two-season coaches. So we've, we've got a great coaching staff right now, a lot of dedicated people, and it's always good to, to thank them, because without them, we don't really have much. So.
That's it?
That's it. Lots of good news.
Before that, I, I wanna interrupt you, because you're very good at giving all of our athletes and coaches, um, their due, but, uh, Mr. Kendall was just awarded a national certification through the National Interfacial Athletic Administrators Association. Um, he's put up, put a lot of work into that and, um, congratulations. And thank you.
Awesome.
How are the, um, the numbers in the, the middle school for baseball and softball? How they doing this year?
Softball's at 14 and the ba, the middle school baseball team's at 16, but we also have four, oh, and we have four at the JV level and there's four eighth graders quite at the JV level for softball. So total is about 24, 38 softball and 42 in baseball, between high school and middle school. So still pretty strong, uh, which is good, because it's, I know in a lot of other places it's not. There's a lot of schools not having JV teams. And it's funny, cause the school I used to coach at, when I, last year I coached there six years ago, we had 48 kids try out for softball and now they have 14. Uh, which is amazing to me. I don't even know how it happened, but it happened. It happened quick.
Yep.
So we're fortunate. Again, that goes back to people like Jeff and then Krista Myers and a lot of other people. I'm sure many of you volunteered your time. I know you volunteered a lot of time in, in the towns, Jim, helping out with, with our sports teams too, so.
Thank you. Just very solidly thank you.
I was gonna do it from memory then, I'm like, that's a bad idea. I wanna write that down. Especially after being at the Wizards game till 8:30 on Monday, I might be, so a little fried from that one. Uh, with the user fees, so I just put the, real quick summary for you guys. Uh, user fees fund the large majority of our busing officials and support staff for the season. Uh, you know, basically the, the line item in the budget covers for busing in one or two months, September and October probably, and everything else comes from the user fees and the officials. About the same, it covers about the fall and then, um, everything else comes from the user fees. And, you know, we do buy some essential stuff from that, not too often, and Bill can attest that most of the stuff we've, we've able to purchase through our, our regular budget, but a lot of non-essential stuff, like I'll buy apparel for the students or for the, you know, the staff to kind of wear it out when they're out and about. Uh, so some of that stuff is purchased there too. And it's all increased dramatically over the past six years, as we all know, everything's increased dramatically over the past six years. Uh, the user fees, user fees have stayed steady. And just as a review, the current fees for high school sports is $200 per year, uh, middle school sports is $100 per year, and the family cap of $500. No additional cost for high-cost sports, such as ice hockey and then free reduced lunch have no charge. It's not a high number here, but there's, you know, we still have a pretty good number of students who are free reduced lunch. I gave you some comparisons to other local schools that are in the Midland-Watson League. So Bromfield, there's a per sport. I'm glad I'm not there trying to figure out who's supposed to pay what because I looked at their list and I'm like, oh my God, this is challenging. It ranges anywhere from $260, which I believe is cross-country, to $395, which I believe is skiing and swimming. And we're part of their co-op for swimming. And we're very fortunate that they've never charged our students to swim there. The students pay their user fee here and that's it. So I'm very thankful for that. They've always been a great partner for us. Grand Dunsell's $400 per high school sport. So if you play three seasons, it's $1,200, which is their cap for family. 200 sports for the middle school with a $1,000 cap. And then ice hockey's an additional $500 per season. Littleton, $250 per sport. I'm not going to go through all these. You can see them. You can see that they're all, pretty much every other school in this area charges at least $250 per sport. We're $200 for the year, which I think is great. I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of user fees. And I understand the need for them. And you can see there's three that are free and I called all three of those schools, Leamester, Fitchburg, and Clinton. And all three of them said, we only have about, they have about 70 to 80% free reduced lunch that play sports. And it wasn't worth the manpower time to chase down the $50 user fees they used to charge to make $1,000. They said it was easier just to wrap it all in. That's why those are free. Cost increases, busing, just from fiscal year '20 to fiscal year '23, it's gone up 56%. Part of that is COVID, part of that's busing, part of it is we have more sports teams. But we also balance it off because golf never has a bus now because they take the minibus. Girls' basketball, the last two years have rarely had a bus. They've usually taken the minibus. Whenever we can send a JV, like JV softball's going to West Boylston on Monday by themselves. There's only 14 kids. They take the minibus. So yes, there's been an increase because we've added unified sports, we've added volleyball. But it's also, that's kind of been balanced off a little bit by the use of the minibus. So that's been a great thing. And that's been used for a lot of other things as well, just so you know. The minibus is not just an athletics thing. AP testing up at our AP prep on Saturday. Lala Kapasa took a bunch of kids up to Narragansett to use it. It's been used for multiple field trips. Amy Doll's used it for the gaming team a few times. The musical directors have used it to transport equipment. Band has used it multiple Saturdays. So it's been getting, I would say this spring, it's been pretty much used almost every day, including some Sundays. So it's been, it's been used quite a bit. It's going on a field trip to the Museum of Art in Worcester on Tuesday. Special Olympics tomorrow. So it's getting its use. Just to give you football, it's an idea. All sports have gone up about the same. RC football officials made $77 per game in fiscal year '19. This year they make $95 per game. Next year it'll be 98 something. Goes up about 3 to 4% every year for officials. And the support workers have not had an increase for their work in over a decade. So like someone who's doing the clock for a basketball game, JV and RC will get $50 for the night. It's been $50 for a long time. I mean, I was doing the clock in the Shobah Regional Games 15 years ago and I got $50 a game. So they've been, they've been pretty steady. I'm very lucky that I have a great group that do that. Some of them have been doing it 30 years and they love doing it. And they don't complain about it, but I think it's important to remember that, you know, they do a lot of games. Kevin Southwood is one of them. He's at every. And then equipment and uniforms have increased considerably. Now, we're very lucky that we have a lot of local vendors in the area that will deliver or I can pick up. So Matt Husk does a lot of stuff for us and I'll just go grab down to Lancaster and pick it up for Northborough, US Sports in Northborough. So we save a lot on shipping, but those costs have gone up quite a bit as well. So just, I mean, you guys know Matt, but just wanted to remind everybody that those things are going up exponentially. And our user fees make up a lot of our budget. So the proposal would be to go up $50 for both, per year for both high school and middle school athletes. Go for $250 the year for high school, $150 for the year for middle school with a family cap of $750, not including an initial surcharge for ice hockey. You know, the challenge for ice hockey would be this. So it's different depending on which team we're talking about. So the boys team, which is called the Ludenberg, they pay $700, they pay $200 to us. They also pay $700 to the Ludenberg Ice Hockey Boosters who fund half the program. And then we pay $700 to the Ludenberg Athletic Programs per kid to help fund the other half of the program. The girls' ice hockey team, because they're a co-op with Leamester and Leamester doesn't have a user fee, they don't pay anything to Leamester, but we pay, what was that, $1,010 per kid, Bill?
Yes.
It's about $1,010, $1,010 per kid for each player that's open. We're the only school that I know of, and I've called a lot, not just in Central Mass, that doesn't have a surcharge for ice hockey. I don't think it has to be a lot. I think a little bit of a surcharge for that high, a very high-cost sport. And I'll give you another example. I coached ice hockey for 20 years at the Shobah. They paid $385 for a user fee and then they paid usually somewhere between $600 and $900 of a surcharge to play. For, I don't want to speak for all ice hockey parents because I'm one of them, but they're used to it. $250 is a trouble for ice hockey. And I don't say that lightly because I think it's, anytime you're charging money to people, I think you have to think long and hard about what's appropriate. And this will still be the least amount anybody charges for a surcharge for ice hockey by a considerable. I think Grand was the second lowest at $425. I didn't do this lightly and I make a joke about ice hockey parents being used to it because we are. But still, I don't tread lightly with charging anybody anything extra these days because it's not a cheap world to live in at the moment. That's it for me. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
So Steve, first of all, this is fantastic. So this is what people are charging this year right now.
Yes, so I'll give you an example. Grand Dunsell's is probably going to go up next year.
That's what I'm thinking. So are they, so they're going through the same thing. So if we say, well, you know, we go to $250 and that's kind of matching everybody else, but is that going to cover us or should we actually consider more than that at this point, considering that these are current ones, not what we're going to see from them, what they'll be doing down the line?
I'll jump in on that one. See, it isn't. It's not. But we also don't feel like it is fair to increase in one year, a drastic increase for sports. You know, $50, we think is reasonable. And we'll, we're going to reevaluate next year and see, you know, what it actually costs us. And then reassess. And if we have to do a small increase next year, I would rather do that than to go with, with really what some of our neighbors are doing now. It would be a shocking increase to families. So we just don't feel like that would be fair. If we have to step this up over, over years, I think that is a much more reasonable approach than go from $250 to $750 user fee or $600 user fee per sport like some of our neighbors are charging.
We're $200 and you're talking about $250. And if you went to three, then that would be 30%, which is still not doubling it or anything. Because I think you're going to see those numbers from all the other districts at three.
I would imagine they're going to come up.
They're not going to stay where they are. They can't.
I think you're spot on.
The cost of busing, everything that we need, the maintenance is too important for our fields and stuff like that. So I could ask Bill to jump in this and, you know, we are going to cover the kids and make sure that we have the sports. So that's not a question. So has that been considered? Because that would be a 30%, which is in this day and age, buses went up a lot more than that. I mean, it's totally justifiable in my mind. I just wondered where you want to go with it.
So that, with the, with the $50 increase, it would be somewhere in the vicinity of about a $15,000 additional.
I do work with, I mean, some of you know this. I mean, I do work with any family that comes to me and says, we can't pay it on time. I'm like, fine, we can, we can work on a payment plan. I can let kids work, work off their user fees, you know, so.
We're, I mean, we're happy to bring some hard numbers to the next meeting. And if, if it is the desire of the school committee to go to 300, which I would agree is still a fairly reasonable user fee. I mean, we can look at that. But, you know, roughly, and Steve, you know this better than me, it's about $15,000 with the $50 increase. So I would assume it would be about $30,000 increase, which is kind of a drop in the bucket as far as what we pay for athletics. So we're happy to do that. Again, we're trying to not be, really what we did with, with our plan for the, for the overall budget, to try to step this in over a number of years was kind of the plan. But if everyone thinks that, you know, moving to $300 is reasonable, let's, we can certainly look at that and bring you exact numbers at the next meeting. That would be though, we're at 200 now. So if we increase to 300, that would actually be a 50% increase.
Because the only thing I'm thinking about is from the high school parent perspective, like particularly if you have a, if you have a senior coming in where sometimes, you know, throughout the high, throughout high school, kids will kind of pick up and drop different sports. But then that last year, if they want to do everything, I would like it, I would like to have that balance so that the kids could do, could do everything. Because what I'm thinking about is, you know, senior year is a very expensive year. Junior has some money associated with it. And, you know, parents, we all tend to calculate based upon what happened the year before. And then of course, if there's a slight increase, that's fine. But when we're talking about the athletic fees to jump that full, you know, it would end up being $100, it seems a little, it seems a little much. I see it from our perspective, but just being a high school parent and flipping that around in the anticipation of when you get into the upper classes, that could actually make a pretty big deal, given balancing it against the costs of fees associated with athletics.
Chair could jump in. Just to clarify, it actually would be, the $250 is for all sports. It's not per sport, so the 300 would also be for all sports.
I was thinking per semester.
Which is why it's, it's really, we, it's, we have a deal, right? Because a lot of other, other districts are charging more per sport.
I was talking about increasing, increasing it more, you know, doubling it. But I was applying it as if it was $250 per semester, not the full year. So for once a year. So yeah, I still understand the concept of balancing between, yes, we want to have an increase. However, if we look at the overall expense, even with jumping it, even that 30% isn't going to, because I don't want to, I don't want to decrease the value in that. But if it's not going to really make an impact against the expenses that we have, I think helping our student athletes and families be able to kind of slowly increase might be a little bit wiser, just given all the other things that happen, particularly from the high school perspective. And again, being selfish in that, I only have one kid. She's in high school. So.
One of the things I worry about too, on that same note, is, you know, if we go up too much, we have a very high participation rate. I mean, I haven't done this year yet, but last year was like 68% of our high school students participate in high school sport. I think it's actually up from last year. I wouldn't want to see that number decrease because of money. You know, you don't want to ever tell a kid, you can't participate because you can't pay $250 or even $200. This is why I always work with the students.
Absolutely.
You want to come see me and you want to come work and attract me and for two hours, we can knock something off. Or if you want to help me set up a volleyball match, we can, you know, the kids have been great about it, the ones who want to do that. So.
And you do, yeah, and I do want to highlight that, Steve, that I, I know that you absolutely do that and I've heard that. I'm just thinking about parents that don't engage and don't know that. So they automatically make the decision for the family without even reaching out. Is kind of where I was thinking because you do make it absolutely clear to all of the kids that you're willing to work with them, kids and parents. But I was just thinking from that, the perspective of maybe a parent that's not as communicative or engaged, they might just make a decision once they see the flyer. So. But I agree with you. I'm excited to have the increase, particularly we have so much going on, not just through all of the sports that we have, but the investment that we have from our staff and from the community as well. Ashley, did you have something?
Yeah, I actually had a question for, I know you said it was different for the, the boys and the girls' ice hockey. Would they both have that surcharge, though?
Yeah, I think the surcharge should be, because we do pay for both. It's a little bit less for boys because the family's already paying $700. I mean, I think that's something we have to, you guys probably have to decide. I think to be equitable, I think it does have to be $250 for everybody here.
Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking for the boys, that would be like $1,200. I mean, I guess, I don't have, I'm not a hockey parent yet. I guess maybe one day I'll find out. But that seems like a lot of money just towards the one season. But I guess maybe that's.
I'm trying to think in my head right now who plays ice hockey. I don't think there's a single student, I could be wrong, but I, in my head, I don't, I can't remember any student who only plays ice hockey, which is rare, I'll also point out. Usually ice hockey players are ice hockey players and that's it. I think every one of our ice hockey players plays another sport, so at least.
Yeah, it's going over.
So it's going over two or three, and I think most of them are three, actually. The kids I'm thinking of are a lot more three-season sports.
And it's, it's buying ice time.
Yeah, ice time is ridiculous.
No, I think that's totally reasonable.
Like the worst of the buses.
The only other thing would be, I noticed that in your examples, which is really helpful, so thank you. But Tingsboro has kind of like a tiered, like they charge a little bit less. Do you think that would be something that would be helpful? So you're not, I don't want to say punishing, but like.
I think if we ever went to the three, charge every season, I think that would be.
Yeah, like charge them less for subsequent sports. But I mean, I just feel like maybe the kid that pays, plays one sport is paying the same amount as the kid that plays four sports. So would that be a way to increase it without kind of, like Erica said, making, you know, some of the parents say no? You know, keeping it to the increase that you guys suggested, but then maybe adding like $50 for the second sport? Or like add your increase to a second sport opposed to adding an increase that everyone gets? If that makes, I don't explain that correctly.
I understand what you mean.
I think the way you have it structured right now, you're not losing anybody if you have 63 to 68% of the community participating. And I don't think people want to know, well, I have to pay this semester, I have to pay this one, I have to pay this one. They'd rather see it done, open to all, and the paperwork then becomes horrendous.
It is a lot easier to figure out who's paid when it's once a year. It's 30 days, three times a year. It gets a little, a little challenging for them to track who's paid what. Family ID helps a lot with that, but.
Then when it's paid, then the volleyball comes up, the kid goes, oh, I can play volleyball. I'm all paid for, right? So they don't have to dig up money again. So I would just, I like the system where it's just like, hey, and you're done.
I do enjoy the once a year. I think it's, and it's, it's nice because it's not, it's not a ton. I mean, I don't want to compare it to youth sports, but oh, you probably have kids who play. I just paid for eight weeks of flag football for my seven-year-old at Leamester, $135 bucks. It's one day and wait for an hour and a half. It's a different world. Obviously, they have a lot of bills to pay there, too. But I do like the once a year. It does, I think it encourages the three sport, two and three sport athletes. Because I think a kid who maybe wouldn't have participated in volleyball might because like already paid. Doesn't cause me anything to try it. I'll try it. Generally, once they try it, they usually stick with it. There's very few kids who quit sports here, which is great. And I do love that participation numbers are high. And we might be the highest in the Midland for student participation. It's pretty, it's pretty great. Our coaches do a great job recruiting. Our PE teachers are getting kids out there to try things, so.
I wouldn't spend any time giving us more detail on athletic fees and the rest of that because I don't think we need that for the decision. It wouldn't help. Because no matter what you do, you're going to be deficit spending, right? Everybody knows that. But what I'd like to do, because we haven't touched this in a long time, is to kind of build into it. So I'd rather see a step program that says, look, you take a look at the numbers here. We're way behind and we need some help. But you like to soften the blow, right? You know, like club somebody with it. We haven't touched it in a while and say, look, let's sign onto a three-year program. It's like, we'll go up 40 this year, we'll go up 35 next year, and we'll go up 30 the last year to get us really where we think we're going to be. And even after that, you're going to be up 105, you'll still be deficit spending. We haven't touched it. But I think if people know it's there or know it's coming and they can see the increases, I think it's going to really soften it for them. And you tell somebody next year, they got to go up 40 bucks. It's like, yeah. And it's going to go down five, and then it's going to go down five again. Like, that's okay. And that gets you to 105. But I think we got to, we got to make some move now just to get it out there so people understand this is coming down over the next three years. But we didn't, we need to get to 105, but we can't do it to you right now. But we can do this and we'll all find a way to live through it. And if that word gets out there, I don't think you'll get any pushback at all.
I'm trying to do the math in my head. Are we raising, this year, did we raise approximately $60,000 from sports fees? Or how much are we raising?
We had about, yeah, I'm trying to do it in my head, too. We had about, it was about 285 high school students who participate. About a third of them are free and reduced lunch. So we'll say 220 at $200. So what's that, 40, almost $50,000? And the middle school is about 100 at $100 each with a few free and reduced lunch. So it'd be about $60,000.
Okay. Well, they said, it was easier math when they said, we're going to make $15,000 from. It's like, I can multiply that by four. So, I mean, I want to echo what everyone's saying, like this is the bargain in the region. And it is $60,000 or an extra $15,000 in a $33 million budget. It's hitting, it'll hit families more than it will hit a taxpayer. So just recognizing that too for this group, like we're making a decision to ask families to pay this versus putting this as part of our school budget because that is another thing we could do. Again, we could prioritize this within our school budget to invest in sports at the rate that is required to offer the sports that we offer. The other question, which is a little bit tangential from this, I feel like over the course of this year, I've sort of like discovered that we have fees, right? Like Erica, you may have, one of the, maybe the student representative mentioned like, oh, I'm going to get my license and I'll have to pay for my parking spot. I was like, we pay for parking spots? I never paid for a parking spot in high school. Like, I never paid fees. I'm like, do we, like, is there a way to see all the fees an air Shirley family has to pay to fully engage and participate in the district? And not because I don't want us to do this, but because I, it's easy in isolation to say like, oh yeah, we'll charge you 50 bucks. It's a bargain. But if it's 50 bucks on top of, you know, the already 200, on top of 100 here, on top of 100 there, it adds up. And so I just want to make sure that as a committee, when we're making decisions that impact families' spending decisions, like we have a complete picture. So that would just be my, like, request. And I also just want to remind us, like, we could fund sports at the rate that is needed if we wanted to. We could make that decision and recommendation and put it to the towns to approve. Or we could prioritize this over other investments that we're making in terms of the things we're spending money on.
Parking's $100, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I was like.
I'm not sure, what are the club fees? Are there club fees?
We have not gone with club fees since the pandemic.
There's actually where Leamester was, Leamester was zero, no, no user fees, but they, they stopped them at the pandemic and haven't reinstated them, although I would anticipate that might be happening.
Yeah, yeah. There is a list of fees in the high school handbook. However, we can put together a list and.
I should have done my homework when we approved the handbook and obviously what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. But I think what this also shows is the kind of full spectrum of fiscal responsibility that we have from administration to athletics. And I want to highlight that it does take. And I want to highlight that it does take a special type of leader to be able to balance that because along with creating fiscal responsibility, putting in more work, that means you need to design a program for people to want to be there. So it can't just be, oh, they're there for the kids. I personally love advocating for them, but I do children's Sunday school once a month because otherwise I may not have a child. So I, I can't, I, I love children, but I can't be around them that much. That sounds terrible, but it's, it's true.
That's a money I'll take care of.
But I'll advocate for them and I'll make money for them, I promise. So I want to just highlight the fact that your leadership, forward-thinking in providing a safe space to, to help people to keep going when they inevitably get tired, is not lost on me. I don't think it's lost on any of us, but I do want to highlight that because that is using varying skills to accomplish something. So I think Chris is right, and this is where we can do some balancing to where if we need to go and advocate for the budget, we can. And here we've been doing a great job of being fiscally responsible and putting it on the parents' or families as well. But then also highlighting that you, as an administrator, are balancing between fiscal responsibility and providing a welcoming work environment for those that are around you. And I can tell you the kids regularly talk about, even at their level, where sometimes they can be missed in sports, they feel that they're able to contribute and that they are supported, that they're gaining skills that most times kids don't even start getting into until they start like their first jobs. So I do want to commend you for that. So I think we, we all are in agreement. We, and I apologize for being late. Coming from work, it was not fun, I was in traffic. But I'm sorry, I'm just going to orient to this, this schedule. Do we, do we need to do our vote now? Right, or no?
Well, you could. I would make a motion that we support the high school sport, increase 250 for the year, middle school for 150 for the year, additional surcharge of 250 for ice hockey and a family cap at 750 for the coming year.
Second? Okay, Adam, did you have something you wanted to say before I?
I technically can't because there's a.
Because there's something on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor.
Nuances, um, sorry, okay.
You can second it and then I have a little discussion.
I think we should just, we have a motion, a second, and we have a discussion.
Right, discussion.
Right, so I, I just think, I think it's easier to give them a three-year plan so they know what's coming, and they know that we have their need, their best interest at hand. And even at the end of it, we're going to still be way down on the bottom tier. So it won't be, we won't have to do this for four more years. And three years over, so I'd rather, I guess, well, we have, we have the motion on the floor. I guess I wouldn't support the existing motion. So if it comes to a vote, I wouldn't. But I would be putting forth a motion that would change the increase from $50 to a three-year plan that goes 40, 35, and 30.
Okay.
So if you're.
I'll do the vote and then we'll see where we land. How about that?
If it passes, then we're done.
I almost got through this year without a nuance, sorry. All right.
Jim, you could do, you could do an amendment to the motion if you want to add the years to it.
Do you want to do it in a moment?
So I would, I'm concurrence with the motion as it exists with the alteration being a three-year step program, instead of the $50 per year increase for this upcoming year, we would scale it to $40 for the upcoming year, $35 for the year afterwards, and $30 in the third year.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor of the amended?
Or do we have discussion on this after that?
Right.
I love you all, but I don't love you right now. So, okay, discussion?
Jim, so if, if you were to repeat that, please, you were saying how much in the first year, the second year, and the third year? What was your proposal?
40 the first year, 35 the second year, and 30 the third year.
So that doesn't give them as much as they want in the first year?
Right, it's shorter the first year, but it builds in a three-year plan. It just makes it easier to act for the parents.
So we'll end with 305 at the end of the third year?
Yes.
I'm afraid to talk because I feel like you all are going to make it worse for me. Okay.
Erica, you're in charge.
I know, I'm going to take charge here. All right, so we're going to vote on the amended vote, okay? So all those in favor of the amended vote to have the user fees be $40 increase first year, $35 increase second year, and $30 increase third year. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're not in favor, nay.
Nay.
Abstaining, abstain.
Abstain.
I got confused. All right, so we're going to roll it back and.
Now that that's happened, can Adam share?
Yeah, because that's where, I'm still back there because I want to know what he has to say.
Well, I was simply going to, going to share that, that Mr. Quinte had suggested a three-year step increase. And we could certainly put together, there, there was one, or I was going to offer to put one together for, for the next meeting, essentially.
But we have another motion on the floor now to vote on.
Which would be the original request. So what I am wondering is if we're making, because the $50 increase would be for the next school year, correct? Right?
Yes.
Okay, so then what if you can still submit the proposal for year two and three? We'll just be at the next meeting. We're just, we would be forward-thinking, it's a, it's like a split of the baby almost, but.
We're happy to do that.
Yeah, and then that way we can communicate it out ahead of time so people still are able to prepare themselves.
You can also table the motion until time certain, if you want.
Do you have to have a motion?
Yeah, so let's.
And just say it's, it's going to be, we're going to take the motion as it exists right now. We're going to move that to the 15th.
Okay, so do I have a?
Make a motion that we table this to the 15th.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. So we'll give you the time to do what you need to do, but we still are in favor of what you'd like, and yes. Do you have anything? Do you have anything you want to say because I don't want to cut you off?
No, the only thing I was going to say is I forgot that sports update was that the Janus President Hall Memorial Track was lifted, so that's on the track. Get a chance to go and look at it, it came out nice, so in time for the race coming up in a couple of weeks. And that was done two weeks ago, so forgot to put that in there, wanted to make sure I sent that.
Sure.
Sorry, before you head out, can I ask one other question?
Sure.
What fees do we charge other organizations using our facilities?
The event fee, is that what you guys call it?
Yeah, like if, there's a men's pickup league that plays soccer here at nights, and the basketball teams use our gyms on weekends. Like, I'm sure there's some range to that.
We don't charge, I'm, I'm going to let you get into specifics. I want to say the good one, we don't charge the, our rec leagues anything. So if you are the rec department in Shirley or Air and you're, that is, it is the town's facilities, we are just taking care of them, so there's no charge for that. Occasionally, if somebody wants to use it on a Sunday, occasionally we, we may have to charge for a custodian. Is that, that?
It depends, we usually try to cover it ourselves.
For the rec, for the rec league.
Shirley Rec's been out there this, this spring on Sundays using the field, which I'm thrilled about because I've been trying to get Keith to let the teams use it. So they've been here on Sundays. I know we've had a custodian come and open the bathrooms and come and close at the end of the night, but I don't charge them anything.
We want to support local youth sports as much as possible. Now, if it's a local youth sports that is a for-profit, they would be, they would be charged a fee. And I don't know the exact fee, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Quinte.
School groups and community groups, we don't charge. For like the pickup soccer, we, it's $100 an hour for the new athletic field.
Okay.
For the turf. For the grass fields for soccer and baseball, it's $50 an hour. And then we, we charge for custodians to be on-site while we have these outside groups. The community groups are invested in our, you know, like Park Department, Jeff Thomas is always helping us out. So it's the groups that are nonprofit or not affiliated with the schools. It will charge $100, $50 for the grass.
Yeah, we also charge to the auditorium, that gets used quite a bit. We have rental space for Keystone.
Classrooms.
Classrooms and classrooms for CAPS Collaborative. We have individual MOUs, which I would prefer not to disclose.
Separate.
Separate. We certainly could do that in executive session.
Super helpful, and I, as someone who supports, at the very least, the Shirley, active, I support all the rec leagues, but participates in the Shirley rec leagues in the same way that if we're considering charging families, I wouldn't think we need to charge a lot, but that may be a place where, again, it's like, we're paying for the janitor to be there to, you know, open things up. There's some costs we're incurring from that, is that another way to sort of supplement this further? Again, in all of this, I want to make sure that we're getting, whether it's our sports programs, our music programs, our, you know, our classrooms, the resources they need. And if we can't fit it into our regular budget, what are all the ways that we can do that? We can certainly ask our families, we can also ask community organizations who, again, I don't think it, they can pass costs on too, right? Again, if they have 100, I don't know how many, third, fourth grade soccer, there's four teams of 11 just for boys, there's another four for girls. If they pass, or add an extra $5 for each of those kids, you know, that covers the cost of, you know, a dozen kids here at the high school paying those fees. So it's something to consider, maybe not for this year, but for the future. As we, you know, again, there's a lot of costs, they're all going up everywhere. If we can spread them out as much as possible.
We, we are looking at all avenues of that. We, we actually have a tuition in student from another district at a substantial cost. We looked, we haven't had any in quite a while, but foreign students come in, and I'm forgetting the agency we work with, Michelle, for.
Cambridge.
I'm sorry? The Cambridge Institute, which it would, essentially we charge our per pupil expecting share. But it's been at least two years since we've had a student. Yeah. Four years, four years.
It's been a while.
Well, thank you so much, Dave, I appreciate your time and your hard work.
Thank you, it's always, always a pleasure to come talk about athletics here, James. I have the very support of everything we do, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next, Dr. Renda will discuss the ASRSD Family Engagement Plan?
So I think you're going to be very happy that we put these in memo form for tonight because it's just about 8 o'clock, and this is probably the longest part of the meeting is about to start. So at, at the last school committee meeting, we presented the communication audit and then part of the communication plan, and then we, we received some, some very good feedback about how to possibly engage families who we can't typically get to engage, who don't fill out the surveys, don't necessarily come to some of the school events, or when they do, they are actively engaging with us to, to give some of their feedback. So as we started to prepare this, it really started to take on a life of its own. And it's, it's, as you will see, it kind of expanded from the original idea, which is still in there and is at the core what it is. But I think if we left it at that, we'd be missing an opportunity to really work on the welcoming aspect of, of the district that is, is always at the forefront and a focus for us. So I, I do, and I am being sincere when I say this, we do appreciate the feedback because I believe this led us down an avenue that we probably wouldn't have gotten to on our own. And I think there's a lot of potential here. But what we would like to do is to start employing proactive approaches to randomly inviting parents or guardians to partake in various focus groups and initiatives facilitated by not only me, but other administrators. Specifically, and this is, I believe what we had talked about at the last meeting, at least once a month after a school committee meeting, not directly after, the day after, excuse me, to invite parents in for a focus group and talk to them specifically about something that we want feedback on, but also have part, as part of that, an open forum where they can come and discuss with us any of their concerns or, or what they would like to talk about. So we're looking at a couple of things here. We're going to keep the open forum, I would like to keep the open forum once a month before a school committee meeting, and we can have that in-person and on Zoom. We're here anyway. And we would like to get that to be part of, of our culture so parents know that that is happening. And then to be, to be more, so that's just, that's passive, right? It's happening, we know it's happening, we'll remind parents. And if they come to us in person or on Zoom, we're there to have that discussion. But then the next day, actually, we'd probably have it the alternating meetings so we're not jam-packed. But the next day, what we would do is, is specifically reach out and invite parents to come. So we have a student information system, we have all the, the communication information that we need with parents. And we can absolutely establish a very transparent way of randomly inviting these parents. We don't have that completely fleshed out yet, but what, what we're envisioning is alternating schools. One week, one month it will be Laura White, one, one month it will be the high school, and so on and so forth. We throw the grade levels into a hat, we pull out a grade level, okay, it's going to be third grade. We're going to throw the teacher's names into a hat, okay, it's going to be Mrs. Martino. We will have numbers of the students that are, are on that roster. Each number will align with the student. If I pull out number two, whoever is number two on the roster, we will invite those parents. And we're thinking two to three parents, that could change. I think two would be, one would be awkward, I think. Two, I think, would work well. Three, three might, but I think above three, where some people aren't going to, aren't going to speak. So we're thinking somewhere between two or three to start. And we would adjust that as, as we go, depending on how effective it becomes. And that's, that's one of the thoughts, and this is kind of, it grew from there. So from that point, we, we started talking about how do we, how can we use this to, to really have some diverse engagement opportunities? And so there's the superintendent focus group and open agenda, and, and that's going to be more than, than just the superintendent. I think what we will do is invite some other administrators to be part of that. People always want to talk to our wonderful assistant superintendent. So Charlie would certainly be part of that at times. Maybe Mrs. Payne, the nurse director, or Tara Bosak can be part of it. And we can certainly advertise that, depending, probably not everybody every week because that can be overwhelming, but certainly sometimes have someone else there who parents may want to speak to. But also starting to invite parents to workshops and seminars that we hold, we, we've had a, a couple of Zoom trainings from ESS, Effective School Solutions, this year on different topics about students' mental health. And, you know, we send it out passively, it's on the weekly update, and we ask parents to, to Zoom in. But I think what, some of what we need to do, and again, this can't just come out of my office, but it has to be every, every school administrator's office, is that when we have these events, to specifically invite parents who we either know are struggling with some of these issues and could benefit from coming to this, or has expressed interest or concern. So I meet with parents all week, every week. It's mostly phone calls, but there's often in-person, in-person meetings. And what I, what we started to think is when we have these meetings and parents are expressing their concerns, it's not going to take a lot of effort for us to keep a list of that and what the concern is so that when different events come up that may pertain to that event, to personally reach out. Either it's, either it's me or, or Michelle, you know, it, it could be me directly or the superintendent's office to reach out and say, hey, this is coming up, we would like to see you there. You shared your input with us, can you come be a voice? And the other part of that is, it's really difficult to say no if someone calls you personally and invites you to come. It's really easy to say no if you just get an invite or a notification in the weekly update that's happening. So we're, we're looking to kind of expand, it's not so much random inviting, but, but personally inviting parents to come to things. And we don't do that really at all unless it's, it's kind of by circumstance where I'm running into a parent and I would say, hey, this is happening, you should consider coming. I think we're going to make that much more purposeful and proactive. I mean, there's, there's no, there's an endless amount of things that, that are happening in the district where that personal invitation or reach out could, could take, really be effective. And I don't think we have to really go through what all of those are. One of the other things that we would like to do is, it is, it is nice to have this before the school committee meeting because that's in the evening, and then the, some of the personal invites can be during the day, but we're going to kind of change up the times on those. I think one of the reasons the coffee with cabinet, I'll say it hasn't been successful, but I. but I will say it's as successful as they were in the past. All right? So we have, we typically have under five, five parents show up. Part of that is, we're doing it during the day in parents' work. We have to, we have to change the times that we're doing that. So we'll have some things that are on a fixed schedule, are happening at the same time, some in the evening, some during the day. But then some of these other things, including the, the focus group with the superintendent, we need to change up the times for that. And essentially, the parents that we invite randomly are going to set the time for that, because we're going to have to find a time where they can all come. So we'll be open to that, and that's going to be a scheduling challenge for Michelle. Thank you in advance for taking care of that. And then the other part of this was really, is to take advantage of opportunities when, when parents are already in attendance. And it's, it's kind of a, it's, this is the beginning of an idea, but we're already all going to things. I'll use the musical. We did two musicals in a weekend recently. I was at a Friday night and a Saturday night. I could have very easily shown up twenty, twenty-five minutes earlier, set up a table with a banner, ask the superintendent a question. And just sit there and see who, who comes and engages. I'm certain some, some parents would. But I think it's got, has to be more than just from out of the, out of central office and the superintendent's office. So whatever we, we employ, we will probably do some of this at the school level, too. I'm certainly open to feedback on that. But we really think this is a much more proactive way to engage with families who don't typically engage with us by asking them personally, being available to them at something they're already at, and then getting that personal invitation after they have expressed interest or concern on different topics that they're already talking to us about. So that's kind of like the, the three-prong approach. And then the personal outreach I had mentioned before, you know, is really important. Like I said, if, if we give you a call and ask you to go to something, at least me personally, if I get that personal invitation, it's hard for me to say no. But if it's just something, if it's a Google invite, or an email, or on a weekly update, it's, it's quite easy to overlook it and skip it. And then really, my role is going to be modeling this for the other administrators and, you know, actively greeting and participating and welcoming families and facilitating the interactions at these events, which is, you know, something that we regularly do. But now it's going to be in the form of asking for input and feedback. So, and like everything else that we do, we're going to, we're going to try this. We're going to collect some data. We'll see if it's successful. And if it is, we'll keep going. And if it's not, we're going to adjust. So that's kind of where we are with this. I know this kind of morphed into something, I think, on point for what you were asking, but, but probably a little bit more. I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify.
I think this is good. We, we gave you a task, and you definitely met the need.
Well, the feedback was very clear. So it, and then actually, when we started to think and talk about this, it was, it would have been a missed opportunity just, just to leave it at that one thing.
Yeah. Great. Absolutely great. Thank you. Well, I'm for that. Like, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still digesting and reading, but I definitely like the way this is going. And also with the personal approach, the other thing is, is that that shows that we're paying attention when they come in and they speak to us. Because sometimes, you know, parents can come in and they feel like they're not heard, or they're so distraught that they then question if they appropriately communicated the need. So circling back and providing that, you know, invitation, I think would be great. Because then it also shows that we, we're engaged, we are listening. And even if you feel like you didn't express yourself well, this is at least the takeaway we got, and we'd love to partner with you. So I think it's great.
Well, thank you. It's, it's, the systems that we're going to have to set up so that we don't miss these opportunities is going to be interesting. One of the things that was supposed to be on here, and I forgot to put it on, was a, an online suggestion box on our website, and then one that goes out in our weekly emails, because we don't really have a way, besides sending an email, a way to give feedback in that way. At first, we were going to, we were thinking of a Ask Us A Question box. But that, that's tough, because we could literally get hundreds of questions that we would then be on the hook to answer in a certain amount of time, whereas the suggestion box is, is a little bit more passive. So that's something that, that we will start, that one will start relatively soon. That's an easy setup and a Google form. And forgot, I put that, that was actually a suggestion from Michelle Town, and I forgot to put it on here. So my apologies, Michelle.
Adam, so you just said that if you had, if you said it was a question box, you would get a million questions. I would guess that they would break down into two or three strings, where you would have, yes, this is the same thing that you're talking about, and you're talking about, and you're talking about. So you wouldn't be necessarily answering each individual one. But we have had the question about, and then a comment or response in that way. I don't think you're going to get.
Well, we could, we could certainly do that. I would, I would want to do that so it's not anonymous.
Right.
You know, we would have to collect an email address and a name and phone, phone number for a response, because it, from talking to some, some other people who have done things like this, anonymous questions or.
No, you don't want anonymous.
Questions that you have to post answers publicly to turn, turn into a nightmare.
You have to put your information in there.
Yeah. Yeah. But if we, if we did that, it would have to be very transparent what we'd want to know. Because, you know, someone can have a bad day and shoot off a lot of questions. Then we'd be on the hook for answering, which is fine. And we certainly have to answer questions from, from parents in the community. But, but we'd have to be very careful how, how we tried to execute that.
I, I like that idea, but I feel like if we started with a suggestion, and then maybe if we kind of ran out of steam, then we switch a question in. Here's why. People's interpretation of what they're doing versus what you put out and communicate can be two different things. Because I could very easily see that going from, I put this question in the question box, and the superintendent never got back to me.
Never got back to me, yeah.
So I feel like if we start with the suggestions, right? Because you can kind of take a ball and run with that. You have time to build it up, because those are skills that you all have, given that you have so many different things that you do when you're building, you know, different programs. And then eventually, you know, maybe if you get to a certain place or space, test it out. But that would be the, my concern would be, some people may utilize it incorrectly. And then you have a different set of issues on your hands. That's just my two cents. Ashley, did you have something?
Yeah, I just.
Sorry, Ashley.
No. I like this. I think it's really great. The only thing I would say is maybe try to incorporate, I think you said this, but incorporate the school principals and student principals. I think by the time that the parents are getting to you, it's because they didn't feel heard or didn't feel satisfied with the response they got from the school principal.
From the other people, yeah.
Or the teacher, or, I mean, whatever steps. I feel like hopefully they're following some type of chain of command. So I think if you gave a little bit of, like, if you kind of teamed up with the principals, it would give them a little bit more, like, I can't think of the word I want.
Spirit?
Yeah, they just, it's going to kind of like make sure that they complete whatever task you're giving them. Whereas the parent feels like, I keep emailing the principal, I keep emailing the teacher, I'm not getting an answer. If they were able to collaborate with you guys as a team, they're going to see you holding that principal accountable, and it might kind of ease their, their concerns. Because I'm guessing a lot of it's really not something that you should be having to deal with, or that would be something on.
You're absolutely right.
So I think that. And I'm not saying that anyone's doing anything wrong, but put it back on that principle.
Yeah.
So the parent's heard, but then the principal's doing what the principal needs to do.
Completely agree, and that is absolutely part of this. And I would say it's about 50%. I would say 50% of the families absolutely follow the chain of command and come to me when they feel like they, they can't come to a resolution with the school. And then there's, there's 50% that just jump, just go straight to, straight to the superintendent. But in fairness, when that happens, we do try to direct them to, have you, and Michelle does most of the screening, have you talked to the building principal yet? Have you talked to the teacher? And we try to direct them back to them first. And then we absolutely give the school a heads up, too, saying, hey, we just got this call. They're calling you. Let's make sure we, we contact that parent and try to resolve this. But this can't just be coming out of the superintendent's office. This, this whole plan has to be integrated in all four schools. Yeah, completely agree.
Ashley, you segued into, you brought something back to my mind that I thought, like, as soon as you said it, I was like, oh, my gosh. I, I, it's probably been months that I've been wanting to kind of highlight this. So I think for us, like, in our roles, even though we're outside of the district, it's something that happens in any career path. As much as we celebrate the changes and recent strides that we've made as a district, we have had a lot of change in leadership, and we have a lot of new leaders. And I think, in, in, not that what you said was negative, I'm just going in a particular vein. The expectation of parents is that you have to recognize that we have some people that are still learning at a certain level. So they're not going to automatically know. I mean, Mr. Deppy, we know he's been in his role for a number of years. Mr. Christie has been in his role for a little while. We have our middle school principal, which has probably one of the hardest schools, is new. So we've got to recognize and maybe even sometimes address when we're having those one-on-one conversations, that they need time to grow in their role, too. And as much as Adam is going to step in and Charlie steps in, you know, to assist and help them grow, just like when we're on the job and we're in our management, or, what's the other role? I can't think of it. But in, in our higher-level roles, as we grow into those roles, you know, making sure that we still highlight to parents, because they're, they're not going to know. You know what I mean? Like, in their mind, you know, this is a principal, and he's supposed to know what to do. And that's absolutely not true. There's tenants that they're going to know. But they're not going to know it every single time. They're not going to get it done appropriately. That's why we have, you know, Adam and Charlie here to help them and walk alongside them. But I did think that a while back, it was important to highlight that we have, we have people who are growing in their careers. And as we all know, it's usually the first five years when you're in those roles that you really get your, a lot of your hard knocks. So I, I think they're doing a good job, not knocking them. But I just want to kind of highlight that abstract point, so that people kind of remember that. Because we've grown a lot, but we've had a lot of change at the top. And that's great to move forward, but at the same time, we have to accept that we're going to have some growing pains. Sorry, I didn't mean to segue, but I, if I didn't, I wouldn't remember. So I appreciate you letting me jump off of that. Go ahead, Adam.
Well, any other questions on that? Or do you want, so next, we have a proposed time change for, for the middle school and high school stock times for next school year. So essentially, we have a very technical problem that we haven't been able to solve. We have teachers who are staying past contractual time to supervise students waiting for a bus at the high school on a regular basis, daily. We've tried to solve this problem by working with D-Bus and asking that they stop dropping off middle school students when they leave the middle school. What's supposed to happen is, we have buses who, they pick up both middle and high school kids and then do a run. When buses are leaving the middle school, they're supposed to drive directly to the high school and pick up students and then begin the run. They are making stops from the middle school, on their way from the middle school to the high school. We have contacted D-Bus at least three times to let them know this needs to stop. And they're not. And when we are talking to the drivers, they are telling us they have permission from D to make those stops. And it is putting us in a situation where we are not following the contract, the teacher's contract. So our only other avenue to start this is to have a little bit of a differential in the start and end times between the middle school and high school, since we can't get this resolved with D. What we would like to, what we're proposing is the high school starting five minutes earlier than they start this year, and ending five minutes earlier. And the middle school starting five minutes later and ending five minutes. No, wait a minute, do I have that in reverse? I would need the middle school.
Excuse me.
I would need the middle school. I have that in reverse, my apology. I would need the high school to stop five minutes later and end five minutes later, and the middle school to start five minutes earlier and end five minutes earlier. This would, this would change it. We would actually be reversing this problem a bit when we have students in earlier. But the difference is, is the buses drop off in a staggered way, whereas for dismissal, all the buses leave at the same time. So it's a much easier problem to manage in the morning than it is in the afternoon.
Questions?
D-Bus and Company. So we've talked to the drivers, the Bus and Company.
We've, we've, we've talked to everybody that we should talk to at D.
And they're just like this, we're just going to do whatever we want.
No, we've been told that, that they're going to stop, and then they don't. And, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't be expressing this if we weren't at a point where we just don't feel like we can solve this with them.
They can't get drivers, though. So like, the drivers are like, look, I'm going by the way this kid lives, and I'm dropping off. And that's why I'm doing, I'm not going to make them stay on the bus as I drive by. It's ours. Go through the school and drop off on the way by. I'm just going to do what I want. And if you don't want to, you join the bus. You can go.
You know, and. And you don't think it takes a lot of time, but we're talking, we're literally talking five minutes, 10 minutes is, is a, is a big deal here. And, you know, teachers are, teachers want to make sure kids are being safe, and they're staying. But day after day after day, it's becoming a union issue. And quite honestly, I don't, I don't blame them. You know, we, we should be able to solve this.
Yeah.
And by the way, we tried to solve this all of last year. And they, the teachers' union was fantastic, allowing us to try this. We weren't able to solve it last year. We haven't been able to solve it this year. This is kind of like, this is how we think we can solve it, which is why we're here and asking for this.
I mean, I, I'm asking mostly because of, we, I know how much we spend with D. And I also know that they've got a monopoly, essentially, in terms of our options, right? It's not like we can go call Shirley Bus Company. And so, but it is, and again, five minutes here, five minutes there, not a big deal. I'll figure out how to get my seventh grader up five minutes early next year. And it is frustrating for a company whose costs have gone up as much as they have, make up such a significant portion of our budget, isn't able to sort of operationalize this relatively straightforward thing.
And, and to be fair, you know, it is very difficult to find drivers. So that, that could, that could certainly be playing into it. I don't know. But, you know, we, again, all of our other attempts to solve what we think is a pretty simple problem have failed. And it's, it's not fair to Azria and the members and the teachers that are doing it to continue down that avenue when it's, it's obvious that we're, we might be able to get it fixed for a week.
Yeah.
And then it's right back to the not being fixed.
Yeah. Okay.
Contractually with the bus company, will this change anything? I mean, obviously, the contract's not helping us in the sense of getting them to do what we're asking. So will this time change? Are they going to fight the time change? Are they going to be not there on time? So then the issue continues?
I'm looking at you, Mr. Plackett.
I don't think five minutes for East Building is going to, is going to mess it up. The, the air buses for the middle school, high school runs have to be at the middle school, and then they have to go directly to the high school. So I think, I don't think it's going to be an issue. Shirley, the Shirley buses, there's only two or three buses that come over to line up at the high school, and they're there on time. It's, it's just waiting on the air buses to come over from the middle school. So I think they'll all be able to get there on time, but we'll monitor it very closely.
Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking, if you change the time, I mean.
Is it going to change the cost?
Are they going to be there, yeah? And you're also asking them to get there earlier.
It shouldn't, because we're going to be, the pickup times are going to be the same.
We're doing two tiers, still. We have two, two tiers, high school, middle school, and the elementary. So that's what we're paying for. Twelve buses for those two, two tiers.
Okay.
Right. So we need to make sure when we structure that, that the pickup times in the morning doesn't change for D. And the pickup times, and the pickup times, obviously, in the afternoon really won't change. We're actually just giving them, hopefully, the way that we, we do this will just give them a bigger window.
Right, a buffer, yeah.
A buffer to be on time. Because there have been times when, I believe we've had some students dropped off late here, but for, for valid reasons, either an accident or a drain. So that would hopefully increase that window so that doesn't happen. But that's certainly something we're going to have to look into, and we will come back and, and report that out. out. And if it is a cost increase, we'll certainly come back and ask to have that changed back.
Um, so can you remind me, is, is Transportation Services, in this case it's D, but I'm asking in a general, um, is this a company or are they a union? Like how is the contract written again? Is it just where we have a contract with a company that's D?
Yeah, we go up to bid, they, they respond to the bid, they're their only player around.
Right.
And so it's a single, single bidder.
Right. And it's a public, that's still a public, well, not public like, like Markbus, but...
They're a private company.
They're a private company providing, is it technically a public service given that our?
No.
No.
Okay.
It's like buying uniforms.
Yeah, it's a contracted service through a private company.
Yeah, uh, I don't know why I was like hung up on that and having a hard time with it, okay.
And we do have a contract with them.
Right.
Three years with two, one-year extension possible.
Wasn't that just last year we renewed the contract or was it two years ago?
I think it was two years ago.
I mean, I know I was there, I just don't remember what year it was. It was, that's why I was asking that, okay.
And, and also to be fair, I mean, they, they, they do runs every single day and almost every day there's no issue.
Right.
Right, so I mean, I, this is just the, the one thing we haven't been able to solve, so, um, you know, how many, we have 12 buses?
Twelve.
And most of the time, those 12 buses pick kids up and bring them home, um, uh, without incident. This is, this is the, the one made, to us, major thing that we, we need to solve, uh, for the high school teachers here. And, and honestly for the kids, because they're waiting an extra 20 minutes, uh, a day right now to get on the bus and go home. And as you know, 20 minutes, uh, a high school student waiting 20 minutes to go home is a recipe for bad choices, right?
Yes, yes, I would be among them walking to my home, just, so I get it, I get it. So I, I appreciate you all and also the high school. Um, I think we all do just to kind of work together to fix that, but yeah. I, um, do we, do we need, we don't need a vote for that? Do, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's the start and stop times. What's wrong with me? Okay, get it together, all right. So does anybody else have any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the start and stop times suggested by Dr. Renda tonight for the buses to make it more efficient.
I will, second, third.
All right. All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next, so we have the recommendation to accept school choice students for 2024, 2025 school year based on available seats. Dr. Renda, take it away.
Thank you. So we are asking, uh, to accept the recommendation to accept school choice for the 2024, 25, uh, school year kindergarten through grade nine. As you can see from this handout, um, we have determined the number of open seats at each grade level, uh, except for grades, um, kindergarten, uh, grade nine and grades 10 through 12, which we do, uh, we have never opened school choice or that we ask that you don't open school choice. Uh, the reason that we don't, uh, have these numbers for kindergarten is enrollment is not yet complete, though it is higher at this point in the year than it has been in recent years. So we are expecting, uh, rather a large kindergarten class, uh, at both Page, Hilltop, and Laura White. And for, uh, the high school, we don't have that number because we, we do not yet know how many students will be attending, um, Tech or possibly Parker Charter or, or some other choices. So th- these open seat numbers change on a, can change on a daily basis. We try to cap kindergarten through second grade at 20 seats. Now, we say 20, if we have, if we have, um, uh, high enrollment for kids who live in Aaron Shirley, that number can be higher, uh, than 22. However, if it is at 20, the average class size is at 20, we, what we would ask is that school choice not be open to raise that class size with students who don't live in the community. And for grades three through five, we're asking for, we use a cap of 22. And then, um, six through tw- uh, six through nine, uh, 25. So we are asking you to vote to open, uh, with these current seats and these seats will be updated, um, on daily basis. And we will ask you to close school choice for specific grade levels when we reach, um, capacity.
If I remember correctly, starting back around December, so weren't we, we looked at something like this and we were not, we had like maybe nobody open? So have we, have kids dropped out? What's the change here? Cause this is adding eight, adding 19, adding 23, there's quite a difference of not having any open areas. So what was the change between?
Some of the change for the middle school, uh, and high school is we were at 22. We feel 25 is a manageable number for middle and high, so that opens some available seats. Uh, and then for the others, uh, this is because this, these are projected numbers for next year. This is not the, the current year. So, but you will notice that most of these, um, there's not many seats open. So, uh, the projected kindergarten enrollment was down this year. Uh, so the projected number at Laura White, um, for first grade is three open seats. So that would be one student per section.
And they'll take you up to 22 per section.
That would, right, that would take us up to 22 per section. And if you look at first grade at, um, Page Hilltop, um, that is, that number is much bigger because there were three kindergarten sections at, uh, Page Hilltop this year. But that kindergarten class would be going into first, which will have four sections. So that's why it looks like there's, there's 23 available seats.
So you added a section in kindergarten on Page Hilltop? No, first grade. No, I'm going back to kindergarten, which is gonna...
We will be, yeah, we will be adding the, we will be adding the fourth, we will be adding the fourth section back. It, there's already a need for it with the number of enrollments that we currently have.
And so we have instruct, we have teachers and everything for that.
Oh, yeah.
That seems like, and space.
Yeah, no, we have, we have the...
Inner space and outer space.
We have the classrooms and we have, um, we, we do have the teachers. There will be, there will be a posting, uh, for a kindergarten teacher, but we already have, um, plans for that.
Okay, and will there be a posting for first grade at Page Hilltop?
There won't be, there will not be a first grade opening at Page Hilltop.
It just seems like such a change, cause we had like, we talked about this.
Yeah, well, you're looking, you're seeing that massive number at Page because there was, there, the kindergarten enrollment was down. Now, that could change draft, that could change very quickly. We've had a ton of move-ins this year too, so, um, you know, we, that is, you know, having a, a class size of 16 is, is fantastic. Um, I would, I can't imagine we're gonna have 23 students looking to school choice into first grade at Page. I mean, that, we've had, we've never had any type of request like that. It just happens right now, it just happens to look like this 23 available seats. But, uh, we get roughly, I don't know, somewhere between 30 and 40 requests of school choice between now and, and August. And we don't...
Moving target.
We, we accept somewhere between 20 and 30 and, and that is because, um, not everybody is looking for a, a spot where there's an available spot. In fact, we get a, we actually get, uh, quite a bit for, um, high school, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, but it is, um, it's very difficult for us to take high school, school choice students in and make sure that they graduate on time.
Yeah, just a complication or something.
Yeah, well typically students, students are looking to change, um, for, for a reason, for a struggle. And the problem is at high school and, um, for, because there's credit and graduation requirements, it is then very difficult for us to help them get across that stage on time. And then there's a, there's, unfortunately, there's, it negatively impacts, um, the high school and, and their accountability. So that's, that's one of the reasons why, uh, it's just simply easier to allow school choice in when they're freshmen so that we can guide them through that, that process. But it's really difficult and it's, this, this is barely common practice for a lot of high schools, um, to, to not accept, uh, 10th and 11th and 12th graders.
Right, even ninth grade.
Uh, some don't, yeah, we, we, we do. Does that, did that answer the question?
Yeah, it's just, I know, but it's just like we were not open to anything, there were two spots in the world and now it looks like a different picture.
Yeah.
Jim?
If you were reducing a section at Page Hilltop first grade, wouldn't that what you were on target for your, what you're looking for per classroom? And if, I mean, if you moved it down to three sections, that puts you at your 22 number and then you just close your open, accept no other people in, you just drop one section?
You put it in kindergarten?
We, we could, um, but we're, we're trying to learn a lesson from what, what we did this year. So we, I had cut the section in kindergarten this year because the class size was down and that resulted in, uh, what was a very difficult year for Page Hilltop kindergarten. In retrospect, if I could go back and not make that decision, I would not have made that decision. I would have, I would have kept, um, the four sections and had our kindergarten teachers have 16 kids per class. And we're looking to rectify that this year, uh, in first grade to spread those kids out, have the lower class size and have the opportunity to, um, have a really positive, um, impactful year for our first graders with some early literacy.
Cause I, I just look at it and it's like trying to get equity across all the grades and all the schools and it, and it really stands out a lot. And when you start this way, that means you chase this bubble all the way through to pick up middle school. So you end up absorbing that extra teacher all the way up to the end.
Yeah, we, we are, we are reducing a section of fourth grade this year for, for, for that exact rea- reason, but there's, it's a little bit different because in, in fourth grade, they're really have, they're, they're in the process of making the shift of learning to read and reading to learn. And in the younger grades, they're, they're still learning to read and it, the, there was a lot of added stress on that kindergarten team this year, um, uh, that, that we really didn't anticipate for. And, uh, part of it too, there's, there's some dynamics of that actual class and the makeup of that class and the students that are in it, that we feel it would be better to push them from three sections into, into four sections.
As a parent of one of those kindergartners, I would wholeheartedly agree and I think they definitely need four groups. And I think that especially, I mean, if you look back, um, the year before last, the first grade had five sections. So I think, yeah, you kind of have to keep first grade as light as possible. With that being said, would you, if you did get an influx of school choice, would you at some point, you know, cut that back knowing how important the first grade?
Cut it back as, at the nu- well, right, right now, so the, the...
Class size.
The, the highest the class size would go is, and I think that actually might be, I think that, yeah, that's actually not 23. So it is, we round that up to seven, it was, it, it's 12. There's 12 open seats in first grade, my apologies. I, I taught ELA. But so what, here's how we do that, 16.3, there's no such thing as a .3 kids, so we round that up to, to 17 on average, which means there would be three open seats per section, times four sections is 12, not 23. So.
With that, should we entertain adding another section to Lori White? Cause that would bring you the first grade of Laura White at the exact same number as the first grade of Page Hilltop. That brings you to 16 on both first grades.
That would be incredibly difficult to do right now with the budget certified. That would be cutting from somewhere else. One of the things that we, we could do if Laura White does not grow, yeah, that's what we did this year too. We're gonna have to look at that and, um, come back with a recommendation probably at the next meeting. But where, we wouldn't be open for kindergarten, um, well, it doesn't matter, it's not kindergarten, it's the first grade, but, uh, we can do that, uh, come back with a recommendation for that and it shouldn't affect the, the school choice because these number of open seats will be completely different by the time that we do our school choice lottery in August. So you could still vote to open it, um...
I think we can, we can.
For that.
I think we should explore it, but I also think that we should just accept what's in front of us, cause that doesn't bind our hands to opening another section for first grade if we decide to do that. Cause this is only about whether we accept new people in. We can just accept the plan as is and then take a look at maybe adding another section, have Lori White to give us the, uh, equity across both the schools.
Or, or just close the school choice at Law first grade and leave it at 21 kids. If you're worried about the class size, but...
Well, actually...
I know 21 and 16 is a very different class.
The, the...
Yeah, again, it's just to explore it, but I think we should, I think we should approve what's in front of us right now. We should take a deeper look at that and see if maybe we have other opportunities here. I have no problem accepting what's in front of me.
Actually, the, the school choice at Law in first grade should be closed, uh, because they're already at an average of 21 and we try to cap that at 20 for K through two. So that wouldn't, but we could, we could, we could look at that, uh, or come back with a recommendation for that too.
Anyone who wants to go to Law, we can push them towards Page Hilltop.
Men and Chair, I think we should just table this till we see how, see, come back with it a little tighter. I'm looking at you, Ash.
Oh, um, I mean, you, you could. Again, the, the way that we do school choice and, um, the way that you vote for the number of open seats, we won't have a lottery until August, these seats will all change by then. Uh, so essentially what you're voting on is to allow, uh, the superintendent to, to make decisions when there's, um, available seats, whether or not to accept school choice. These numbers are, are just currently what's available.
It's floating.
It is floating, it is always, it is always changing and we are, um, so we could table it, but, uh, a yes vote would not impact any of the other recommendations that we'd come back with.
I would make a motion that we...
I will withdraw that.
And I would make a motion that we open school choice.
There you go. Second.
All those in favor, say aye, aye? Do what you gotta do, Adam.
Thank you.
Keep this posted.
Mm-hmm. All right, so not gonna miss it.
If I may?
Yep.
Um, we have the superintendent's report and two memos on the superintendent's goals.
Yeah.
Um, which are three, three separate memos, two from, from myself, one from Mr. Cleary, which will be very quick because as we know, he's exceptionally at being, exceptional at being concise. None of these, uh, except for the superintendent's report are really timely. I, I'm not sure if you want us to power through, we're happy to, or if you want to, uh, table some of these until the next meeting.
Guys are making me think today. So I'm gonna say, given the time, if you want to extend it to the next week, so long as there's anything, is there anything that you would like to highlight? I will say that.
There you go.
Next, next agenda's not as packed as this, correct?
No.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're happy to do it, we're prepared, it's, it's done, um, but it's, they're not quick.
Okay, so, yeah, then I have no problem with doing that.
Okay.
It's 8:40.
Yep. Okay, so do I? Cause now I feel shaky about it. Is there anything that I have to do?
We should do the superintendent's report and then we can table the...
Yes.
Yes.
What he said.
Okay. Okay, some district updates. So at the last meeting, we were asked to provide some historical data around attendance for discussion, uh, the Friday before Labor Day, um, being a school day versus a non-school day for students. And then we were gonna look at the Wednesday before Labor Day, the Labor Day holiday and the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We have this information we would like to share with you. Sorry, I have this on a link here. If you could just give me a moment, I'll bring it up. Perfect. So, um, when we look at the student day, uh, data for the Thursday before Labor Day, uh, there really isn't a significant drop of attendance. Attendance is pretty good everywhere. Um, Page Hilltop 96%, Laura White just edges them out at 96.8, the middle school at 96.2, that's great middle school attendance, uh, and the high school, uh, being at 90, 92.2. So no, no significant drop. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving, a little different, uh, 84.8% at Page, 84.2 at Laura White, 86.4, uh, at the middle school and 76.3 at the high school. That's, that's low attendance, um, uh, for all the schools. And then the Friday before Memorial Day is actually, in my mind, kind of the most interesting. Um, the Page Hilltop, Laura White, the middle school, fairly typical attendance. Uh, Page is a little bit lower than what they typical are, but the high school, uh, on that Friday before Memorial Day, 58.10. I'm not sure if that is a skip day or what, but that is low.
That is a parent's skip day.
That, that's something.
I can absolutely attest to that.
Senior skip day that particular school year.
Um, I wish I could blame it on them. I wish I could blame it on them, but I do particularly remember for like last year, it was the nuance of people wanting to go on vacation and being frugal and seeing an opportunity while airfare was lower to take off that Friday. So I very much wanna say that was a parental. I was not among them, I'm just saying, I heard a lot of chatter and it was a very good week and the fares were very good. And on top of that, the seasonal passes for summer began, so my best guess is that's what happened.
That makes sense. Now, it's the same trend really for the staff. Really nothing significant on the Thursday before Labor Day or the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. You know, four staff out in a day isn't, isn't all that uncommon. But when we look on the Friday before Memorial Day, that's pretty high. Page Hilltop had eight staff out, Laura White had six, the middle school had three and the high school had six staff out. So that, 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 that's a bit high. So there is a, a trend for students and maybe some staff to call out on that day.
Southwest and Frontiers fly all summer for $500, pass begins May 1st, just throwing it out there.
I think that the Southwest had, have to get away or need to get away.
Yeah, you just, you book your flight and the only thing you have to pay for is your bag and you can fly every day if you want to. So I have a feeling that because it started on May 1st, that might be why you're seeing what you're seeing.
Well, with the, with the actually approved calendar, well, they're not gonna have to call out. Or actually, it's a early release day that day?
Alright.
So maybe we're enticing them to, to at least come to the, for the, for the, most of the day, right? Any questions on?
I don't worry about the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, you wanna worry about the Friday before Memorial.
Well, I'm, I'm. I'm not, I'm not worried, we're gonna, we'll get through it either way. But I, I would've thought that Wednesday before Thanksgiving would've had the highest absentee rate for both students and, and families, but I think the, the weather's a big draw.
Yeah.
Right? And it's, it's.
Each time.
It, that, exactly. So next is the update on the course syllabus, following up on Ms. Van's question. At the last school committee meeting, teachers can upload their course syllabus into the class description section of Power School. It's only viewable by students, not by the, in the parent portal. And Mr. Tebow, our director of technology, has let us know that it's not very intuitive and it's difficult to locate in Power School, but we can certainly make that easier by sending home some information on where to find that and to ask, ask teachers to model that, where to find that for students.
Yeah, or when, I can't for, I can't remember what the, and I'm only thinking about recent years, but you know, the initial outreach that's done in the beginning of the year? Maybe if the teachers make sure that they scan in their syllabus, they attach it in their email. Because then that way we can download it and save it and that way it's not a huge lift. Cause I know Mr. Tebow tries everything he can before he, you know, says something that's very cumbersome. And on top of that, that just tells me to have my kid screenshot it and send it to me.
It should be in Google Classroom, I agree. And we can make sure it gets in Google Classroom also. The Shirley Finance Committee has reached out, Mr. Brian Hillebrandt, for some school tours. We will be touring the high school in Page Hilltop Elementary School this Friday. Their thought was to see the newest school in the district and one of the oldest. And because of the proximity of the schools on the campus, they thought this would make the most sense. Tours have been scheduled for Friday, this Friday, May 3rd, 2:30 for the high school, 3:30 for Page Hilltop. And we would extend an invitation to any school committee members who would like to attend. If you do plan to attend, if you could let us know by tomorrow, so that if there's more than three, we can post this as a meeting.
Today at 5:00 PM, Tom will post. Don't all, don't all.
Okay. We would like to extend the invitation to three school committee members, first come, first served.
I'm happy to join. Is there a reason?
That'll be three.
Why the Shirley Finance Committee would pick the two? I, I mean, I know the high school is part of that, it feels strange.
They should go to middle school.
I would imagine it's because most of the members of the finance committee know the Laura White school very well already.
Okay.
But that's certainly a question that you could, you could broach with them, yeah.
I'm happy to join if the other folks who really wanna meet these folks, I'm happy to give up my seat. And I'm happy to table that question for them during the tour.
Joyce?
I know I've discussed this with, at various times when we were interviewing superintendents. And if there's no votes being taken at something, we can attend because there's no votes being taken. So I don't know that, it's not a post at school committee meeting, there will be no discussion, there'll be no votes. So I think anybody who wants to come and stand around, I don't think you have to actually post it cause it's not a decision-making.
Well, thank you for clarifying now, I was mistaken.
And I've gone through it a number of times and I know it's difficult because we do need to post, et cetera, et cetera. But not for something like this.
During that video, during the training, they said like even if we're a Dunkin', go outside. I don't know, during the like video for the training, I remember there was like an example, it's like if you find yourself in Dunkin'. The ethics committee, they're like, if you're at Dunkin' Donuts and there's a quorum, one of you needs to leave.
I mean, that's practice really, but it's not.
Okay.
It's not. If you end up at a cocktail party together, it's okay.
I think that's the one I'm looking for.
Don't vote.
It's not in violation of the.
Right.
Equity law.
As a, as a mitigation strategy, and I don't know how logistically, cause I know you, you're talking to the, the building principals. As a mitigation strategy, let's say all of us do come, we could also segment off with different people that are coming from the finance committee, then that way we're not together. You know what I mean? We could, we can do that if we need to.
Yeah, exactly. Break out those COVID rulers.
Yes. I would love, do we still have some? Cause I would like some at all times, just one in my car, one in my home.
Masking tape on the floors to segue how far you need to be.
Sorry.
Sorry. We should get back on that, we're trying to wrap this up.
It's actually 8:45.
Okay.
So next, student cellphone use during the school day. So there's been recent concern from multiple parties, from teachers, parents, administrators, some, some school community members in the district, concerns about cellphone use of students during the academic day. So back in 2017 and 18, a cellphone policy for students was discussed. The school committee determined at that time that the electronics use policy outlined in the student handbook would suffice as the school committee did not want to set a precedent on, and a discipline in a policy coming from the school committee. So what our student handbook essentially states is on the first offense, the phone will be returned to the student at the end of the day. At the second and third offense, the student will be returned, the phone will be returned to the parent or guardian. In four more offenses, electronic devices will not be allowed in school. It may be left with the administrator for the school day and serious discipline consequences may follow. So the part of that serious discipline consequences may follow, that is not a suspendable offense according to 37H, 37H and a half and 37H and three quarters. So I think the most severe that we actually could get is a Saturday detention. However, if, if you would like to explore a cellphone usage policy and add this to the school committee policy manual, we can certainly draft a policy for a future school committee meeting. MAS C does not have a policy on cellphone use during school hours, but it does have a policy on the use of technology in schools by students, we have that link there. We certainly have support from central office and other administrators for a cellphone policy and to move forward with something, they are a big problem in schools. They, they might be the biggest problem we face in the middle school. And if not the biggest problem in a high school, high school, they're, they're up there. We would support moving forward with something, we'd be happy to find some policies. There's many schools doing many different things right now, we'd be happy to gather that information. We have had a member of ASRIA approach us and ask to come and speak to the school committee. They will be coming to a, we are going to have them on the agenda. So the teachers are in favor of this and the teachers' union is in favor of it. So that's, that's something you would like, like me to explore or us to explore, we're happy to do it.
Absolutely. Yeah, go ahead.
So are these things being enforced, first offense and second offense and third offense?
Can we have Jim, who is right?
Yeah, hold on, hold on. I asked Jim and I think you had thought, I said Joyce, so hold on a second, please.
I just wanted, I mean, part of the discussion back in 18 and 19. The situation now is very much different than it was in 18 and 19. There is a lot of data, it's like before, the discussion back then was like, you know, not complying, kids get the phone, not paying attention to the teachers, that sort of pocketed stuff. Not the cell phones were new, but the proliferation of them and even in the downgrades is obvious to everybody. But there's a lot of data now that says, just the fact that you have it around you, it's the thing that you stare at, right? And it's, it makes people not be able to concentrate on their work. It really is a, is a hindrance. And also it always will put the teacher in, in the position of having to be the hammer, right? And some teachers are good at that and all the teachers aren't. Or we, you know, that, we don't hire teachers to be good at that particular thing. So I think, I think we definitely need to look at doing something different. The data seems to be very much in favor of restricting full usage. But I'd like to see, a number of school districts have already implemented that. And I think it's certainly something that we need to consider now. I, I will say that I, I like the idea of whatever comes down, being a director from the committee, the committee to take the school principals off the hook, right? So we'll take the heat, we come down, cause certain people are not gonna like this, you know, but we can take the noise. You know, I just wanna take this off the shoulders of the teachers and off the shoulders of the administrators and the government. I think it's something that we should look at strongly.
Absolutely. Joyce?
No, I just, I've been asking a number of other districts and a lot of them have these nice little expensive envelopes that are locked and they get locked for the day. That's it?
This, this has become a business, there are, there are, there are a number of products you can buy for classrooms where students can, can put their phones in and, and we can lock them and they can get them either at the end of class or at the end of the day. And that's some of the nuance that we would have to, to figure out moving forward. You know, one of the things that, that I wanna mention, this happened recently to, to one of our teachers. I'm not gonna mention the school, but a student had taken pictures of one of our educators and created a fake TikTok account. And it's, you know, this is a, this person who's dedicated their life to educating children, does a great job for all intents and purposes and one kid making a bad choice and creating this and then sharing it with other kids. You know, that probably doesn't happen if they don't have their phone on them in school. Not that that happens often, but it, it does. We've also had kids make fake accounts about other students and we're dealing with this at an administration and school council level all day, every day. And it's keeping us from doing things that really are, are much more important. So it's not gonna get, this isn't gonna get better. It's, it's only gonna get worse as tall, as technology gets better and faster and smaller. It's, it's, it's just rolling. It's probably, is it probably the biggest problem we face in the middle school? I'd say between Snapchat, terrible, terrible, terrible app and other TikTok and other social media accounts, it is a, it's an epidemic.
Ashley?
Yeah, I would say if we could expedite this, I don't know how quickly a policy could really happen, but I think this should be a priority and try and get it implemented for the start of next year. I don't know if that's even like feasible.
Absolutely.
I was like, do you want us to draft one for next meeting?
I know, right?
Read like.
Yeah. Right?
Possibly.
And then in the meantime, my other question would be, I used to be an SRO in Littleton and the IT department, they blocked certain apps. So back then it was like Yik Yak was one or something like that, I don't know, I'm aging myself. But they were really mean and awful, but they blocked certain sites, certain apps, certain functions so that they could only use it. I mean, in the meantime, until we can get this policy implemented, is there a way to kind of start slow?
They're all blocked.
Oh.
The prob, the problem is, is as soon as you block it.
Yep.
Somebody creates a Windows site, so you can log on to windowsite.com and then log on to your Snapchat. So they're, they're viewing their account through a third party and then we block that. And then there's, they're, they're two steps ahead of us.
Uh, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it really is. For, for every, for every safe, uh, safety net we put in place, kids figure out five ways around it.
And there's YouTube videos that'll show them how to do it. There's YouTube videos on how to hack, so I mean, you know.
I mean, I don't know.
I know, right? I know it's hard, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say though, like circumventing school firewalls has been a losing battle since we first brought computers into buildings. I mean, I think, yes, we should work on a draft policy and adjust that use. Literally today, a former colleague of mine was in the Washington Post for, he's a building leader in Hartford and the way they addressed it using the like yonder pouches. So if you wanna talk to a building leader who's used those and operationally, what does that look like? I'm happy to make a connection, I'm sure there's other, you all have connections to. Because I think we can address this with policies and I think structurally, there's things that we could consider. Again, in the sphere of like, there's a lot of different investments we could make. If this is one of the ones we wanted to do, we could consider it, so it's worth looking at. But I think we should at the very least be drafting a policy and we can do that quickly.
And then the only other thing I would say in the way of helpful resources is I had to do the same thing on the employee level at the hospitals because some people truly have a very good intent and want to blog, blog about what it's like to assist mental health patients. And so they make innocent mistakes and then there are other people who do not. And specifically speaking to Snapchat, I was able to reach out to Snapchat, get the terms and policies and make it clear to employees, which then again, the same information could be made clear to parents and also our students, nothing is deleted, it does not go away. And in fact, they hold it in the hub and if the school needed to make an inquiry based upon a certain allegation, they simply have to reach out to Snapchat and Snapchat will supply the information. So it, it, it's interesting, the level of change that happened once we actually explored the avenue, gave the newspaper feeds, you know, because that does fall under patient neglect, which then imposes criminal and civil penalties. And our lawyers were willing to go after employees who participated in it. And it only takes once for everybody to get on board and stop doing things. Now again, we're talking about students, however, I think in the lessons learned column for parents particularly, especially if they don't know or understand an app, to get that information and get them engaged and behind us might be another avenue through communication where we say, hey, this is what this app does, this is what really goes on behind the scenes. And we're trying to protect, you know, our kids, we're, first, we're trying to teach them, but at the same time, we're also physically protecting them by doing this. And then for our students and parents, to help them understand, they're saying it's deleted, it's not. I mean, this is relative to Snapchat, but there's a number of ones that you can get the terms and policies and kind of put maybe a packet together. So that as we're rolling out our policies and we're enforcing them, then also, you know, you have the, here's the why and here's what really is going on behind the scenes.
We, we can absolutely make that part of the, part of our plan and that, that information is readily available. We would not be the first school doing this.
Right.
Okay, so we will put that together and bring that.
Helpful to have a draft policy to bring for the next meeting. There, I, I have six districts who have policies banning cellphone use during the school day pulled up. I could easily take what we have in our handbook and amend it and bring a draft for next meeting.
Thank you, Chris, that'd be great.
Did you guys already start on one?
We haven't, no, we were waiting to see the reaction of school committee before we started.
Oh.
We have not started that.
If you wanna take it, do the draft, you can. If you have enough on your plate, I'm happy to do it and send it to you, Michelle, to put in the folder for next meeting.
I, I'm happy to do it. Would you mind sending me the, the six that you found?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Can we?
For, absolutely.
So extended day enrichment program, so re-enrollment for extended day program for school age students. So these are students in grades K through five, begins on May 6th. Unfortunately, tuition will be increased 4% and that is the minimum increase so that the program remains cost neutral for the 2024, 25 school year. the program remains cost neutral for the 2024-25 school year. In order to reserve a spot in the program, the registration packet must be submitted by May 28th at 5:30. The new rates are below. Again, it is, it is a 4% increase overall from last year. Would you like me to go through these individually?
You're okay.
An additional fee of $30 a month will be charged monthly if you're, if one of your child's days is an early release day. When the, that's when the program starts early at 1:45. This is not applicable to children who are enrolled five days per week. So sessions for public preschool would be determined in June. And as soon as we, the district, determines what the sessions, what the sessions are, extended day, we'll contact the families to modify or change the extended day enrichment schedule to fit the needs of the students. So we have an update from Ms. Amy Doyle, our competitive gaming coach, about the spring playoffs. It is my pleasure to report to the amazing results for our spring season. There are 13 students who have made it to the Generation Esports Playoff. There are two brackets this year, champion and gold. Champion bracket is for students who scored in the top 20% of all players in the division. The gold bracket is for players who did not meet the cutoff for champion, but displayed extremely exemplary skill and attitude in, as an esports player. There are players, these players are chosen by Generation Esports. Also, you would note that the entire chess team made it to the champion level playoffs this season. There are also a number of students who are competing in more than one playoff game. Here are the games, the players, and their playoff bracket. Super Smash Brothers Champion Bracket, Colby Brown, 8th grade, Ethan Chisholm, 8th grade, Charlie Pierce, 7th grade, and Jonathan Browning, 6th grade. Super Smash Brothers Gold Bracket, Ian Walton, 8th grade, Nathan Chrysler, 6th grade, and Gus Murray, 6th grade. Chess Champion Bracket, Elliot Murray, 8th grade, Alex Baptista, 7th grade, Liam Beard, 7th grade, and Manny De Silva, 7th grade. Splatoon 3 Champion Bracket, Alex Powell, 7th grade, Jonathan Browning, 6th grade, Kalen Huus, 6th grade, Nathan Chrysler, 6th grade, I'm not saying that name right, and Gus Murray, 6th grade. Any questions on that? We are looking to get esports into the high school for next year. This has been a tremendous addition to the middle school and, you know, Ms. Doyle is the main coach, but we also have Dr. Pataki, who is coaching, and I believe he's the chess coach. So fantastic, fantastic addition. And this is really engaging some students in, in a sport that, that may not. So we're really excited about it. Middle School Pocket Forest. I don't know if you've driven by the middle school lately, but over the course of two days last week, all of our students at the middle school had the opportunity to go outside and plant trees and shrubs in the pocket forest that is located outside of the middle school. Students had a great time just being outside, learning about the benefits of the pocket forest and learning how to plant. The 8th graders chose the shape of the forest and it is a panther paw. I do want to note that families have the opportunity to vote for our Pocket Forest initiative, to receive an award. It's on, it's on our weekly update and the link you can find in the weekly update, but it is, it is a, we will share that with you in a moment, but we encourage everybody to reach out and vote for the Shirley Devens Pocket Forest regions to receive the award, which is to be named in a moment. There are no additions to college acceptances, but seniors who are all watching this at 9:05 on a Wednesday, please get them in because we would like to celebrate where you're attending college. And I would also ask any students joining the military or have a job lined up after graduation to share that. We'd be happy to share that news as well. That is all for the superintendent's report.
Awesome. Thank you, Adam.
So, okay. So the Citizens Environmental Business Council of New England Inc. has named our Eric Devens East Main Street Neighborhood Pocket Forest as a finalist nominee for the 2024 EBC Community Choice Award. And then you could go in and cast your vote.
And you can find that link on the superintendent's weekly update. Search your email. It should be in there. We would love for them to win. They, they put a lot of work into this and it's, it's going to be great.
It went out in my.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I do not have any chairperson's notes for tonight. Are there any other topics for discussion, not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Nope. Okay. And then we have our communications. I believe I have my communications pulled up. I guess I don't have it pulled up.
Kevin's not here. If you wish me to read it, I can.
Oh, sure. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thursday, May 2nd is a Page Hilltop PTO meeting at 6:30 at Page Hilltop. Thursday, May 2nd is the middle school, grade five, family information night, 6 o'clock at the middle school. Thursday, May 2nd is the school committee chairperson, Ms. Erica Spann, office hour, 6 to 8 remote. Monday, May 6th, 90-minute early release, late start for preschool and professional development for teachers. Lunch will be served, dismissed at times. High school, middle school, 12:50. LAW, Page Hilltop, 1:45. Tuesday, May 7th is the Shirley Annual Town Meeting. That says 7:00 a.m., oh, election, I'm sorry. 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Shirley Town Hall. Wednesday, May 8th is the Shirley Educational Foundation ASAP meeting, 7 o'clock at the High School Media Center, right here. And Monday, May 13th is the Shirley Annual Town Meeting at 7 o'clock at the middle school auditorium. Jim, is that 7:15 for the town meeting? Never mind. Tuesday, May 14th, Air Annual Town Election is at 7 o'clock, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Airtown Hall. Wednesday, May 15th, this is Shirley, is our school committee meeting, 6:30 at the middle school. Sunday, May 19th, and I would emphasize this, why I wanted to read it, is the Janice President and Run for Education. This is very important that we all be there, but I can't go 5K. I don't think. And Friday, May 25th is the last day for seniors. And Monday, May 27th is middle school and observation Memorial Day. And should we have on here graduation? It's June what?
I think it's June 2nd.
Well, I know, but it's important.
June.
7th, right? Tuesday is June 4th.
June 7th.
June 7th.
Yeah, it's June 7th.
What do we do?
6:00 p.m.?
6:00 p.m.? Graduation.
Thank you, Joyce. Okay, we do not have executive session tonight, so I will enter your nomination to adjourn.
I'm making motion to adjourn it. Looking at that clock, 9:09.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.[1799.25]